In the administrators meeting, they other people were talking about, you know how the AI stuff pops in on our meetings? And other people were asking about where's this coming from and how did in our administrators meeting at AOC? And other people say they're just declining them.
Yeah.
So I think from now on, when I see him, I'm just gonna decline him over here.
Yeah. So
I don't know, I don't understand quite how that how that works, but
I don't get it either because we only did that one for biomass. So it's like, why is it attached to our
Somehow or another, it's got us on there on its radar that whenever we have a meeting, it tries to join.
It's pretty
Alright, good morning, everybody. It is nine thirty-one AM. December
November.
November. Harney County Court is now in session. Thank you, everybody for your attendance. If you please stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. December will be here soon enough.
Got two more in the waiting room.
Dragging or something. Alright, um, let me see voucher approval. We've taken care of late items. Any late items for the agenda?
No, sir.
Motion to approve agenda?
I move to approve today's agenda.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Harney County Court regular session agenda for November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Next topic is minutes approval for November fifth, twenty twenty-five, regular session, Harney County Court.
I move to approve the Harney County Court meeting minutes for November fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Harney County Court regular session minutes for November fifth, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Next topic is opportunity for public comment. Anyone online that would like to address the county court? Looks like everybody's on on mute. Anybody in the room? Would like to address county court, public comment? And not hearing any, the ladies are on the agenda already. So that brings us to agency updates. Anna Gailey and Kelly Frank, and I it says high desert partnership, but I presume we're gonna talk about food services? Is that correct, or?
A little bit of Biz Harney and food service.
Okay, welcome to the floor, yours ladies. Thank you.
Okay. Holly, we sent you our presentation. I don't have it. I look close this morning and I had no emails.
You look right, you do look like you lost half an hour.
No. That's okay. I'll just pull it up real quick. I don't want to cast it.
What, do you have a, um, do you have a thumb drive with it on it by chance?
Uh, no, maybe I could.
Just email it.
Yeah, that's what I did. Email this. I just forwarded it to you.
Oh, you forwarded it to me? Okay, there, let me. Except there's nothing attached to it.
So if you go down to the, um, you know. Bill and
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, just a second now. In order for everybody online to see it, I have to go through here.
Okay, well, thank you. Give some spice or but at the top of who I met.
Like this one here? There we go. That's what I was looking for.
Okay, perfect. So we just wanted a chance today to talk a little bit about the Biz Harney Collaborative, which has the Food Systems Initiative in it. Uh, we have newly updated our vision framework, so we thought it was important to present to the county on some of the new visions and goals that we have as a collaborative. So I just wanted to preface, um, again for both online, I'm Anna Gailey. I'm the Biz Harney Collaborative Coordinator for High Desert Partnership. And my name's Kelly Frank. I'm the Food Systems Coordinator for High Desert Partnership. So I know a lot of you know a little bit about High Desert Partnership, but for those who don't, we have six different collaboratives that range from natural resources to youth to business. Um, today we'll focus obviously on the Biz Harney Opportunity Collaborative. And this collaborative has seen a lot of growth in the last couple of years as we as we have added two different initiatives, the Harney Brand Initiative, we'll talk a little bit about today as well as the Food Systems Initiatives that Kelly coordinates. So Food Systems, just for a little bit of an update, we, as Anna mentioned, were initiative that started, but, um, we've been seeing lots of momentum, kind of growth in the community, which is really exciting and just some of our goals and and we'll get into more of this a little bit later as well, but we're really working on greater food security and less reliance on imported food, particularly during disasters, in case everyone knows, Harney County is very isolated and so if trucks stop bringing food into our community, you know, what would we do? So we've been working on providing education on growing your own food. We've been working on helping small businesses in the food systems get going, providing opportunities for them to test the markets and try out their products. So, um, we just wanted to let you know kind of a little bit of what we've been doing with food systems and how that's affecting the community as a whole. Alright, you can go to the next slide. So this is a little bit lengthy, but we really wanted to touch on our purpose, mission, promise and vision. So our purpose is to exist, to bring together and support diverse partners to enhance entrepreneurial opportunity in Harney County. Well, where rural businesses flourish through collaboration, innovation and convenience for we do this through our mission to support rural Harney County businesses start, grow and succeed while building a thriving business environment through diverse collaboration and strategic resource sharing. And we do this through a wide variety of businesses in Harney County. We really focus on that start, grow and succeed as businesses are at all different stages. Our promise is Biz Harney provides the framework to bring people, resources and support through partnerships needed to help every Harney County business owner. From first time entrepreneurs to establish companies like I said, start, grow and succeed in our rural economy. And then we do this through our vision to help new entrepreneurs and businesses emerge and exist in businesses to grow, providing a bright and prosperous future for Harney County. Through collaborative economic development that honors our rural heritage while embracing innovation. So I know that's pretty long, but this is what we, um, really focused on as we wanted to have a new mission and a new, um, purpose, um, as Biz Harney has estimated in the last couple of years. So for example, we do this through our partners and our partners come in a lot of different ways. We have Harney County businesses to our Biz Oregon, G O D C, um, the Chamber, and then a lot of different partners throughout Harney County. Um, these partnerships, partnership work so well locally and rolling that we expanded to regional partners as well. Sorry, next slide. So the reason, the reason we brought together regional partners so that when we apply for, um, funding throughout the state to give to our rural and, um, businesses, uh, we've done that together as a whole instead of doing it as one entity, a high desert partnership. So um, in our first application for technical assistant program funding, which is, um, we'll talk about a number there, but this is what we put in our application. These are our businesses. We live here, we shop here, our kids grew up here. We have a vested interest in the success of these small businesses and our strategy are firmly rooted in local, by us, for us, solutions. We are the frontier, the forgotten, the under-resourced, classified statewide in urban publications with corporate like the smallest and sparsest and closer to Idaho. But we are Oregon and we are banding together to seek support for critical and urgent needs of our collective community, small businesses. So I think by just showing this that together partnering with our regional partners have really benefited not only Harney County, but the state as a whole. Maybe slide change. So just as we talked a little bit about some of our vision, we just wanted to kind of have this question in your guys' mind of imagine how Harney County could trans- transform if all key partners collaborate collaborated towards a shared vision for the future? Just something to think about as we talk about these pillars. So when building our vision in our mid county, focus on our entrepreneurial ecosystem or yeah, ecosystem building blocks framework. And Biz Harney has worked with our partners to assess our rural economy using a seven component framework that comes from our Biz Oregon culture and that comes from culture, capital, support, policy, market, people and infrastructure. And we'll talk a little bit about that today. Next slide. Okay, so as Anna mentioned, we were talking a little bit and diving into the entrepreneur ecosystem, building blocks and framework. And I feel like at first that was a little bit of a struggle for me to associate ecosystems with, um, building blocks and what that looked like for businesses, but it really is just coming together when you have all of these different components and you're using kind of that movement and, um, that's the reason I guess Biz Oregon came out with this is they wanted to have something that was a little bit measurable as well as far as making sure communities are trying to use these different building blocks. So just to dive a little bit deeper into them and and really to showcase what High Desert Partnership is doing through these different building blocks. Um, we'll take a closer look. So the first one like Anna mentioned is culture. And as you guys know, I feel like Harney County has a very rich culture and when all groups are working together, such as the local governments, nonprofits, tribal, small businesses, um, I think we can really build a thriving business ecosystem in Harney County. And the goal is for it to be something that is rooted in collaboration and long-term growth. I don't think anyone's looking for really quick right away fixes, but we want something sustainable. And cross-culture connections, um, are important. So we've been able to do that with High Desert Partnership through our life funding that we received and we put on a tribal youth entrepreneurship, excuse me, entrepreneurship camp. And then the tribal economic development has been a big part of Biz Harney. So we also have a gentleman who took our co-starters class and he was able to receive some funding through the E I P program. Um, and he has a food truck up and going now. So that's kind of a good example of how we've been supporting the culture in Harney County. Next slide. So capital, obviously to have a thriving, um, ecosystem, you need capital and we have been able, High Desert Partnership through Biz Harney Collaborative has been able to support different ways for small businesses to access capital. One example of that is the Kiva loan. So these loans are, um, I don't know if you've heard of them, but it's no fee and no interest. They're crowdfunded, but you can get up to fifteen thousand dollars and you can pay it off as early as you want, um, and then apply for a second one. We also have been able to provide opportunities for capital for small business through, um, shop Harney. Those funds go directly into the county and then yeah, and the community. And then we've been able to partner with, um, R three for funding, for example, recently to work on kind of starting a new project. So the partners that we have helped make this capital available to the community, um, and High Desert Partnership has really spent a lot of time building these relationships and because of that and now regional partners, we can bring more capital into the community other than just High Desert Partnership. Next slide. Support is a really big part of our entrepreneurial ecosystem. Obviously, businesses in rural areas need support and Biz Harney's partners awful offer technical assistance and mentorship programs. Um, we work with the S B D C group, Small Business Development Center, and then Foundry Collective is another one of our partners through Four Ballast. And I mentioned the co-starters class, but Anna and I are currently teaching a class right now with seven great individuals and I'm hoping all of their businesses get to start up here soon. But one exciting thing about co-starters is ninety percent of the businesses that launch after one year are still in operation and that's a pretty good statistic as you know for startup businesses. So, um, it is encouraging an entrepreneurial mindset early on and then continuing to provide support for those startup businesses. Um, and then Anna is gonna talk a little bit about another. Yeah, so this is a photo from a class we did last year. We called it the Side Hustle Entrepreneurship Class. Um, these are two high school students that started a mobile detailing business in Harney County. So that idea to ownership, um, and we partnered with cross collaborating with our Y C T C, which is our youth changing the community collaborative um, to put on this class in a career prep, um, class they call it at hi- at the high school. And these are students who aren't sure if they're gonna go to college or if they're gonna go to trade school or really what they're going to do. So we taught about fifteen kids and, um, they each started a business and some launched, um, informally throughout the school year, but I think focusing on our youth and being able to provide them an option or at least that entrepreneurship mindset that you don't just have to go to college, you can do other things. And because of this, um, T V C C, one of our partners has brought in a, um, let me call it, a, uh, it's called distant learning certificate. So, um, they can take different classes to be certified as a dirty man or electrician or HVAC. Um, and that's a very, have very low cost for them during their high school career. So I think that's another really cool example of you don't have to just go to college. There's other opportunities out there for you. Yeah, and plumbing was another one of those certificates, but that's a pretty big deal that they just announced is that you can now virtually take those right here through the center and have those certificates. So um, we're excited to see that come through.
So I don't, I don't wanna interrupt your moment of youth, but but, um, so on that part of it right there, dealing with T V C C, are you guys playing a role in that or is that?
Yeah, so what we have done is we've just been a partner to them. So we tied them, um, Denise Rose, uh, with the Y C T C Collaborative has tied them to the high school. So Darcy Patterson is the new engagement coordinator at T V C C. So, um, because of the work we do together, she's been able to provide that program to a lot of the Harney County interns, but also in classes like the career prep class at the high school. And High Desert Partnership has, um, funds some of the the salary for, um, Darcy out of it. So that's kind of a tie there too. So we've been able to get some funding to help see these programs come through.
So our building official, um, has, we've talked about, um, in whatever format it might be or whatever form, has talked about, uh, trying to get some kind of trade type training going here and which at the, at the grand reopening at the T V C C, I made a connection with the individual who does the trades, uh, type of training. Tracy or something?
I think it's Janice, right?
I don't remember. I got a card in my office.
Yes.
Um, anyway, um, and then I think we had, we have an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, the last of those economic development, um, conversations that I'm facilitating is called Laboring Workforce. And so I don't know if if anyone's planning to come, but December second is the last one. I believe both of them about three to four thirty-ish.
Yeah.
Here.
So, so I just wanna make sure that when we're, when he's trying to coordinate that and get that going, that the right people are in the room and if you guys are part of that effort, then make sure that he ties in with you guys too.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate that and I am, I am an upcoming Patty, but yeah, I think that's the whole point. I think it's pretty easy for everyone to operate a little bit in silos and we get kind of into what we're doing, but it does make more sense if we can work and collaborate. So, um,
Well, sometimes you don't know who everybody's, what everybody's efforts are and then you end up working against each other or, you know, whatever. So, alright, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, please do. Yeah, please do. No, thank you. Um, okay, next slide. So the fourth pillar that we're talking about today is is policy and, um, really Biz Harney kind of started, well, I guess High Desert Partnership started off the idea that you could have a rancher and a B L M employee in the same room and you can find ways to come together as long as there was a common goal or purpose. So policy happens a lot throughout High Desert Partnership and I I think that has been seen with issues such as groundwater and just coming together, being able to talk about those. Um, we have several different collaboratives like Anna mentioned. So the idea of bringing the right people to the table to have these difficult conversations um, is really important to finding ways and solutions. So one thing we do through Biz Harney is we make sure that we're finding ways to bring some of these policy updates back because, for example, groundwater, you know, the changes and what's going on there are going to affect the whole community, but they're gonna affect small businesses. And we just wanna make sure everyone is aware of policy and what the work you guys are doing and then making sure, um, we are collaborating when we can and and coming together.
Word of hand. Do you know if there's any county level policies that are talked about or problematic that maybe we're not hearing about?
No, I don't think so. There was conversation around if the county does do T L T funding and how that would affect you know, the chamber and and as the chamber as a partner, but I think lately that's been kind of the only one that we discussed. For people, but I know Connie attends our Biz Harney and Bill has in, or Judge Hart has in the past, so I think it's great that you guys come and are able to inform us of anything to, thank you guys. Yeah, thank you for asking that. Next slide. So market is the fifth pillar that we're gonna talk about today and really, um, I feel like Food Systems has had some great opportunities to dive into this a little bit more and to help customers develop and market. Um, we provide lots of access and support to them. But one way we do that is through the seed swap or the harvest festival. We're also doing some indoor markets, but we're allowing startup businesses a place to come, showcase their items and see if that's something that they feel really just a test of their product to see if that is something they can take to the next level. So without a lot of risk, we'd like to offer those opportunities to help those small businesses get started. And then, uh, the also without our, through our, out our market, we have the Harney Brand Initiative, which I mentioned and um, I've been meaning to get with Judge Hart on this, but we launched the This Is Harney, um, brand page and uh, with that Harney brand, there's so many amazing things that came out of that is, uh, this is made in Harney brand, which producers can use and kind of tie our Harney story together. Um, but thisisharney.com launched at the end of October. And, uh, I would encourage you guys to take a look at it if you haven't, but I'd really like to present on that on, uh, sometime, um, and explain that Harney brand that up there is, uh, the one of the main, um, Harney brand as well, but.
You know, there's something that it's been, it's been a few years. So I don't know if it's still the same, but in the state capital, there's a little gift shop and many counties have something from their county in there and you know, I, as far as I know, Harney doesn't. I remember trying to interest one of the people that makes those awesome soaps, you know, if they want, you know, and got them the card and I don't know if it's too hard, but it'd just be a shame if Harney doesn't have something on it.
Yes, and that's exactly what that made in Harney brand, it would have, it looks similar to that, but it says on the top, made in Harney. And so it kind of ties, you know, makers, um, whatever they're producing to that Harney County story. And that is exactly what This Is Harney is about, is just telling our story, being able to, um, to explain our culture, our markets, you know, what what we do here, our history as well. And so that's a website that many of our partners like the Chamber or, um, businesses here in Harney County can utilize as mostly as an asset to them. So it does have a tourism aspect to it, but we want it to be an asset to everyone. It has, it shows local producers, local restaurants, shopping. So please take a look at it if you haven't already and I'll come present like one of them.
So what are the requirements to apply the Major Harney logo?
So, uh, it's very low. So, um, you'll reach out to me and, uh, fill out a form. We just have a small contract that you sign to keep the brand consistency. So what fonts to use, what colors? Um, it's a very simple process. We created that brand so that people and producers can use it for free. But, uh, we do require that small contract just to make sure that we keep the consistency and that story true to the Harney brand. I'm just kind of some questions about the product to make sure it is, yeah. And we explained that on the website as well, but it's a great question. Have you guys had a chance to look at the website?
At this one here?
Yeah.
No, I just first time hearing about it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I wrote it down, so I'm gonna look it up.
Yeah, it turned out really, yeah, we're excited about it.
As you may know, we just returned from, um, the Association of Oregon County's annual conference, um, Friday, just last week. And, um, Kelly, as you've been the last couple of years, uh, uh, helped staff and and put our booth together for the Wander Oregon, uh, event. And this year I didn't, I didn't pursue it this year because I thought maybe we'd give it a year to rest. Uh, but it sounds like you guys might have, if you wanna start thinking about it for next year, that you might have some pretty good stuff to take to it next year.
Yeah, we'd love to. It, um, and it is exciting to see, you know, Anna already touched on this, but I think the whole point of the the made in Harney brand and really all the work that has gone into the development of this is we wanted the story of Harney County to be told by by the people here and not on a side. So, um, it's people are embracing that and they're utilizing it, but it's exciting to see the growth on it. But we, yeah, we've got some great stuff. We can pull together.
I've, I've wanted to the last couple of years and it's just a logistical thing of trying to scrounge things up or whatever, but I'd like to get a TV monitor and play in a loop the, the Harney brand video, you know, while kind of in in the background while it's going and people can see that and whatnot. Um, so there's a lot of things we could probably do with that for next year. But let's talk again, and I know we've got more presentation here and I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but, but let's talk again around April or May about budget.
Yep.
Okay, so that I make sure that I budget enough for however many people you think it's gonna take for that, you know, hotel and all that kind of stuff. So so that we have enough there for us.
Yeah, thank you, Judge Hart. I'd be happy to do that again. And, alright, you had that idea, but I love that idea for the video and it is on this new website. It's kind of one of the first things you can click on that video. Um, but they also have quite a bit more footage that they've been utilizing. So there's a Facebook page, I think, and an Instagram and a lot of the videos that they, um, the marketing team has taken are showing up themselves. Yeah, we're just getting out.
New video, lots of new photos. It's really exciting.
Yeah, good.
Okay, next slide. So obviously, um, to have a thriving entrepreneurial ecosystem, you need to have people that are engaged and actively participating um, and believe really in in what we're trying to do. So Biz Harney provides a broad coalition of partners that bring their varied expertise to the table. And it's really exciting because, um, if there's businesses that are needing something and we can't provide it here locally, we do have the resources and the partners through those relationships that we have built um, that we can get them that access. So I feel like it allows small rural businesses to have same resources as a lot of the larger ones do in the big areas. We utilize our partners that have the expertise in that wide range, like I mentioned, um, but the goal is to kind of ensure that we keep talent retention and meaningful careers can be fostered in Harney County through the people. Okay, and then that last pillar is infrastructure. And basically, you guys know a lot about this, as I know that you're both on the board, but the biomass is something that High Desert Partnership through the Biz Harney Collaborative have have been trying to help, um, see that become kind of successful and find ways to move forward. Um, but that's an example of infrastructure and innovative biomass heating systems and then the renewable energy development that I know you've been working on. And so another example of infrastructure that High Desert Partnership, um, has been able to to bring or that we're hoping to is they've recently received funds to build a regional collaborative center and we don't have all the the details on that, but the idea is, um, a physical space for regional partners to come together and learn the concepts and benefits of using the collaborative model. So we're excited to see more on that.
So is that a potential new facility here in Harney County?
Yes. Okay, well, before closing, we just wanted to kind of, um, throw some numbers to what we've been talking about. We've been able to provide over two million dollars in grant funding to support businesses and this is looked through the TAP program or ROI or B D I P, which have really helped a lot of, um, businesses start and grow. We provided a thousand in funding to develop, to develop the Harney brand and its identity, um, to Harney County. That involved the video, photos, the website, um, and a lot of our social media now. And then we, um, Kelly has provided, uh, over a hundred and seventy thousand to support food security and food systems, which I think is amazing as it is a new initiative. And we provided funding to support the strategic plan for the Harney County Chamber, which I feel like is really key to our community and our partnership with them. Alright, so as we talked about these seven pillars and the importance of Harney County and Biz Harney, we just wanted to ask the question of what possibilities do you envision for Harney County's growth over the next decade and just that question involving, you know, what we talked about with Biz Harney today.
I just, uh, in the economic development conversations that I've been holding, the thing that's really got traction The thing that's really got traction is housing of the things and I, I used to always be of the mind where we. Don't build too much housing if we don't have the jobs, right? Because of the socioeconomic impacts of the community. But I'm changing my thinking in that the type of housing that, that is um, proceeding with the Miller Springs project. Uh, it provides a type of housing that, uh, first of all, they're smart, they're not gonna overbuild, okay? You know, I mean. Just because Patty says be careful doesn't mean they didn't already think about that, right? And so anyway, um, but with. Really nice housing, if people live here already and they've been waiting for that and they want that, they can afford that, that's great. But if it's too expensive for some of the folks, it's still good to have upper middle-class housing. And uh, the developer has done research and said, there are people on, and I wouldn't be building this, but I didn't think this was also. Out there who live in places that they don't wanna live there anymore. They wanna live in a nice, small, uh, small community feel. Beautiful setting of Harney County, but they want a nice house because they already have a nice house, they're gonna make money when they sell it, they can probably buy the house, live here. We need more people. We do need some more population at this point uh, in Harney County. And this is something that uh, R three and, and private sector are doing. You know, we don't have to chip it, we, we, the county did contribute toward the development of um, our industrial area beating into B Street. We did what we could, but. It's happening and so I hope that um, as the developer markets, they can connect with you and, you know, market it well. When, when the time comes, so that's, that's one thing that I, I could see my own thought process changing through some of these meetings and that is a success that has happened.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that.
On one of those slides back there with regional partners, I think it was, it mentioned the uh, northeastern Oregon. Economic Development District, I think that is. Um, we're part of G E O D C's uh district. So I'm not sure how those two play together other than a neighboring district. Um, is it, have you guys worked with them?
A little bit. I know Tori works a lot with them and has provided resources that have trickled down from um, to G E O D C to us. So that's kind of how that partnership works with us. We haven't worked directly with them, but um, you know, Tori from G E O D C does a great job at saying, hey, I have someone that can help at that level. And so we rely on our partners. Uh, regionally like Biz Oregon and G O D C to kind of trickle down those um, resources to us, which have been really helpful to have.
Um, and kind of dovetailing off of that a little bit with G E O D C, we are looking for uh, more board members for G E O D C. I, I'm currently the only board member representative for Harney County. I'd like to have somebody else on there from Harney County, just to, number one, that. You know, looking out for our interests and looking out to see what they can do for us, as of, as being in their district, I wanna take advantage of any services and. And opportunities that they have, so um, within uh, the High Desert Partnership themselves, whoever. If there's anybody out there that would be interested in being on that board, let me know.
Um, we can share that out.
I'm sorry, I kind of have a list of things from, from. Uh, small business, I mean, most of your presentation and most of your work looks like it's uh entrepreneurial and small business type development. Is there any part of, of your program that's uh, larger scale? Uh, recruitment or, you know, I mean, anything could grow. We start off with somebody who's entrepreneurial, starts off by themselves and then it grows. But is there any, any portion of the program that actually looks for existing large-scale recruitment or, you know, along those lines of any kind?
I would say our two partners, we have a Rev and Biz Oregon, so you guys know Feather very well, um, who works a lot with trade sector, so. One, for example, like reframe provisions, they started with a small kimchi business here and then have worked their way now they're. Um, selling to Safeways in California as well as markets, Market of Choice, Sprouts. And there's one more, but, and we've been able to provide those resources throughout that whole entire process, so they started out small. Um, worked with a lot of our partners that like uh, S B D C. Or um, a lot of our TA like Foundry Collective and then um, from that, we were able to work with Biz Oregon and then also G E O D C to kind of. Provide, you know, more resources for those maybe traded sector, but. Yeah, at, at a higher level, I think our, our larger partners like Biz Oregon, they kind of foster those businesses. Um, and we rely on our partners to kind of utilize, to take that business and, and um, continue it. Um. Our co-starters program, we do have a lot of businesses that are already in business that take that to kind of maybe pivot or see different directions that they wanna do, but. Um, I would say, yes, we're mainly focused on entrepreneurs and growing, but. A lot of our partners, both regionally and locally, can help out businesses that are, have been established or. Um, maybe are just trying to pivot as the, you know, a veteran in business.
Kelly, do you have anything? Yeah, just because that scaling, you know, once you get to that larger level, so we can be difficult, so we try to meet businesses, I would say, where they are and that we do have um, different resources. I don't know that we actually have someone actively looking at recruiting, but because we have large enough partners and it seems to be growing, just kind of the area that we get to work in. Um, I think we can make connections that way if there was something that maybe would be a good fit, you know, I just. Just working through our partners, but um, that isn't where most of our work is done.
I, I, I think for resiliency in our economy in Harney County, diversity is gonna be the key. So, so whatever it is, you know, this and that and this widget and that widget or, or whatever is, is part of the, part of the key for our community here, so that's. Um, I'm always looking for anything that, that might be a good fit for Harney County, so.
Yeah, I know you mentioned that Judge in, in the economic development meeting we had in the basement of just maybe those recruiting opportunities, we hope that. We could be a resource to you on maybe possibly connecting across the state on how can we do that and what does that look like? I think is where, you know, Biz Harney could shine in that aspect.
Um, as I sit here and think about it, you know, we had that initial meeting. And even as we determine as the county court of what strategy we wanna take for our economic development. And use those dollars and, and what specific purpose for those dollars, um. They used to do the, the CRT through economic development, the Community Response Team, whatever, uh, meetings. And it kind of lost in, interest, but just as I'm sitting here thinking about it, would, you think it would be? Just to keep every kind of, kind of engaged and, and on the same page that we do maybe a, at least a quarterly economic development? Meeting, just to kind of see what people are working on and whatnot? Do you think something like that would be worth?
I do. I think it would be really, I think the businesses are always constantly asking. On it for input and like, what, you know, what's going on in the community and this person's experiencing it, you know, uh, groundwater issues, is that, is that going to affect me, I think? Just knowing what's going on within the, you know, this ecosystem of Harney County, I think a lot of businesses and. And local community members would really benefit from that, even like you said, if it was once a quarter. I do feel like people are always craving that.
Monthly might be a little bit, every other month on this, on the low end, but quarterly would probably maybe fit. So we'll, we'll talk about that some more then and, and see about putting something together, putting a schedule together for that.
Yeah.
And then collaborating on it. It opened to the public, business, everybody could attend or something, you know, and do it. Downtown somewhere or whatever, fairgrounds or whatever that looks like.
Yeah, I.
Um, Kiva loans. I first heard about the Kiva loans a year or so ago. I really liked the idea of them. Um, we do have a couple of funds in the county that are uh, uh, economic development funds marked for that, earmarked for that. I'd like to consolidate them, it'd be about seventy thousand dollars altogether in those two funds. And then again, it's something that the county court would need to talk, talk about and approve. Um, and then, you know, maybe have somebody come in from Kiva and have them give a presentation on how it works. Um, I like it because it, it, it requires that engagement of the individual who's asking for the money. It's not, we're not just writing a check and there you go and it fails or, or it succeeds one way or the other, but, but there's a little bit more skin in the game, so to speak, when, with Kiva loans. So I really like the concept of it and the way it works and we already had a couple, two or three here.
Um, yeah, yeah, almost four and yeah, the Misty Lambert, who's uh, is our Kiva representative for Oregon. Is going to come in December, so we can plan something like that, but. I do love how they are crowdfunded, so there's been lots of members of the community that have donated their money and I think. The community member that receives that really likes the opportunity for maybe, you know, Pay to donate a hundred, Rob to donate a hundred, that. It is, it feels like it is very community-based when they receive that Kiva loan. It's not just. An angel investor or someone far away that donated five thousand, it's a ton of people within the community.
Well, I think it would show too that anybody that's outside our community that, that does invest, that they see that our community is invested at the, at the local government level.
Absolutely.
Whatever, you know, uh, as well. Um, and I think it's termed, basically we would be like a sponsor or something like that, is that what it's called?
Um, I don't know exactly what the terminology.
Or, or a partner or sponsor, something like that, anyway, we can get that.
Yeah, Misty was talking about that. She came recently, but yeah, she had to get into, yeah, she's gonna come again and would be happy to work through specifics on that, yeah.
I'm tying for that.
And then my last, last is more of a comment, but just to say thank you, pass it along, please, to, to the people out there at High Desert Partnership, but the, the uh, participation in the biomass. Uh, facility, um, over the last year and a half, two years, uh, we've really made a lot of advances, given it a lot of structure. And, and you know, management structure and, and everything that, and good things happening with it, you know, building up, uh, Andrea. Andrea, uh, Latham has been a big part in that and acquiring some grants and whatnot and um. And uh, getting the fuel shed built for it down here, which will be, you know, big savings in the long run for rent space that we had to store our fuel in, so. Um, thank you, you know, pass that along to everybody out there that thank you for your support in that program.
Sure.
That's all I've got.
In our initial work session that we held to try to determine. What direction the court should take economic development and became apparent pretty quickly that a lot of the regional partners like S B D C. G O E D C and all the other alphabets were already engaging with H D P through Biz Harney on a regular basis and have been for years. And so I, I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about. As we decide the next move for economic development vision from a county standpoint, what you think H D P's role in that is and also. Knowing that we have a limited amount of funds to pursue that vision, maybe you could share some insights that you have on. What's already being provided and what direction we should emphasize our limited funding arm.
So for economic development, I think just the individual on who you guys choose, if you choose. One person to be at the table of Biz Harney and to be able to utilize the resources like of all those partners sitting at the table would be. What our vision is as H T P. So being a part of all the conversations, being part of all, all of our, all partner meetings. Um, I think for businesses to have that person be their um, main contact for economic development. But also that economic development individual having the resources for Biz Harney, for G E O D C, so I guess. In my mind, I kind of vision it as another partner at our table. And our partners work within each other and that person would work within our partners at the table so that they would have access to everyone that sits around there. And all those resources, so funding wise, you know, just like the chamber, we help with their capacity. You know, being able to help provide them resources as they don't always have enough funding to do those things. That's kind of how we would hope. That G O D C could help with zoning or grant funding, um, or grant writing, uh, that you guys would be able to utilize those resources. You know, not having to pay someone to do all of those things at once.
Explain myself okay there? So, yeah, so uh, kind of the hope of if you saw this presentation, we wanted to come update you anyways, but that. You knew maybe some more examples and some of the work that we have been doing, um, you know. H T P has been around for twenty years and, and built those strong relationships and so just like Anna had said, but. Perhaps having the economic development person at the Biz Harney table so that we can work on collaboration, but that there are already those connections to resources, those relationships are already built. Um, and everyone can just benefit from that would be a start.
Doesn't seem to me, doesn't sound like. There is a necessity for the county. And it would be hard to justify a full-time position because a lot of those relationships, I think historically, they've worked on developing, are already developed and maintained through H T P. Having someone assigned at the table to represent the county would be important and that, of course, would take a portion of F P, but that's kind of what it sounds like to me. Is outside of like the extensive recruitment like Judge Hart was talking about, a lot of the local and regional. Steps are already been, being taken by H T P, we just need to be at the table so that we know what's going on.
And I have one last, um, just question, um, for the, the food systems. Now, is the food systems, would that ever also take on a, a food system that's already a traditional food system here such as the industry? Um, I mean, Harney County is a major player in cattle industry, really. Um, I learned that through these meetings, uh, not just here, but you know, if you look at across the United States. And if our producers um, want to make sure. Their, the beef is best, the most nutritious, that, you know, really, really good quality beef and be part of the brand of Harney and. Things in the future that, that they would come up with, you know, not, not me, not the county, but. Uh, and I don't know what that would be, I'm just kind of vaguely thinking on that, would, would, or you do, do the non-tribal or the ones who haven't. Who, we haven't done that much yet.
Yeah, so I think that's one of the great things about food systems is, you know, whether you just like to eat food in general or you um, have a ranch or you're starting a food truck. Everyone is welcome to those meetings and we do a lot of community meetings, we've seen a lot of engagement. And we do have one producer already who sells their beef by the cut and she's ordered a made in Harney sticker to put on it, so she's already selling her beef by the cut. Um, and we're just really excited about having um, Beerman's um, state certification, that's been huge, but yeah, we'd love to just kind of keep finding ways and. We were actually able to help put Feather and um, Jonathan in the same room so that they could get some of the funding and, and continue those conversations, so. Yeah, all things we were excited about and interested in.
So does, oh, go ahead, not you.
H T P did play a role in the revitalization or the reimagining of Beerman's.
Correct, yes. But yeah, because of Feather's connection with the community, we were able to tie that in with Beerman's and Jonathan, Beirana and. Um, they received funding through Biz Oregon and U S D A as well, is that right?
Correct.
Um, and then, yeah, we've been able to foster that and because of that. They were at a presentation or a small business community meeting of ours, of Kelly's, of Food Systems, that a local restaurant was at and now they sell. Local beef that is being processed, you know, in Harney County, so those are kind of just the things, but. Robert, I just wanted to go back on your question. So if knowing what you know from this presentation, like how do you envision economic development moving forward? By the community that's made on, not like us already doing that in the.
I guess with the limited amount of information I have about what the economic development has done traditionally for the county. It seems to me like a lot of what they did and a lot of the relationship building that they did is already being done by H T P, so it seems unnecessary. To reinvent the wheel. I also don't expect. Uh, a nonprofit organization like H T P to bear the brunt of that work and so. I don't know if they need. If they need support in the form of resources, I don't know how the new regional center is gonna affect their ability to deliver services to us. And I guess that'd be one of my questions is if they're already pro- providing the work. Do we need to be contributing and if we don't, because that's their mission and their goal, then that allows us to reallocate those funds elsewhere. Do, does H T P have the staffing to continue at this level and potentially even expand their economic development offerings?
At this time, I don't, I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that's been really exciting and, and fun to see happen with H T P and the different collaboratives is. There really is an energy at the table and just like the connection, I think Anna hit it right on the head, but. From having someone selling locally grown beef to having the processing plant and then restaurants in the same room. It, sometimes it doesn't need, require more staff, it's just the right people at the table and the energy and building off those relationships. Things really can grow from there, so um, I don't know that H T P would be interested in, in acquiring new staff or, or taking on an economic. Kind of like Anna mentioned, just maybe just starting with having a representative from the county at the table. I think you'd be surprised what can be accomplished without additional funding for supporting staff.
Great. Great.
Okay, well, we just want to thank you for all of your time. I know that was a long presentation, but we hope that there was good conversation and resources. But yeah, we just wanted to close with our vision. Um, as our vision begins to take shape, we hope that whoever's leading the charge understand. And embraces the foundational ecosystem, building blocks that Biz Harni represents. I just a partnership has spent the past twenty years deeply rooted in our community, showing firsthand the positive impact these practices have. So. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Great, you're great information. Um, as we move to try and decide what strat- that strategy is going to look like for. Um, you know, the counties and it could be anything along those those lines, whether it's an employee, a contract or a partnership.
Thank you.
Thanks, good job.
Thank you.
Not allowed to cancel, right?
All right, uh, thank you very much. That was good. Um, next item, old business and kind of a standing topic is flood mitigation planning. Um, don't have a whole lot there. I know that Brandon is working with Feather uh and Biz Oregon on the uh grant. For um, the levees, the levee or dyke grant, something like that, whatever. It's a, it's a a grant that we can get some funds for, hopefully to reengage the art, the engineers. Uh, and planning is an element of that grant, so we would be, you know, it's right in line with that. And then there's also, uh, there was also an opportunity that came up uh last week, another grant through. I want to say it was through USDA, but it was a park. Um, the counties used them before in grant writing. Um, P A R C. Um, and I asked uh Brandon to kind of look into that as well, you know, just maybe as a backup. Depending on how the, how the uh Biz Oregon stuff was looking. But so we're looking for funds, I guess is the gist there is we're looking for funds to reengage the, the engineers. Um, I did at the A O C conference briefly ran into the um, the general uh from Oregon Military Department. That's uh was our, here for our meetings with the Corps of Engineers. And I told him that, uh, you know, I think maybe as we reengage the uh, get the funds and reengage an engineer. It would be good to sit down with all those in people in the same table at the same time and identify potential projects. Uh, and and then, you know, determine what sticks and what doesn't stick. And and whether that's the grandiose reservoir. Or that is canal work or whatever in between those that 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 we might come up with with a project. That everybody looks at and says, yeah, we could do that or we could do that, or it's a possible, whatever, a possibility or something. But instead of, instead of looking at at ideas and then bringing it to the core and saying, now we could never get engaged in that or something. And we've wasted time or.
Uh, I'm sprung at get for putting some people around the table and and having these conversations. It's really beneficial.
So I guess and this part of the, part of my message then is that we're working on it. We're talking with people. As people know, in the government. Things don't happen overnight. Um, hopefully from. What it's looking like, we don't have snow this time of year that we had last time of year and. And um, we won't be faced with what we were faced with last year, but that's just a a hope and a prayer at this time.
Is, is there a timeframe uh on uh. Planning Director McMullen and and the working on the the grant, what, you know, how how soon can that?
Yeah, I don't know. Find out. I I honestly, I don't know that one. I'll find out though. Um, suspense date.
Yeah, I don't want that to.
I know he's working on it with, with Biz Oregon, so um. You know, and I know they're aware of whatever the deadline is, so, but I'll find out for sure just so that everybody knows.
Appreciate that.
I had a conversation with those Oregon military guys as well, and they were asking about the flood recovery. One of the things that I didn't realize when they talked about the services they can potentially provide. And I feel like I got a little disenfranchised because it probably wasn't going to be near enough term. I thought in the spring, I thought that's not going to help us if it's not till next year or the year after. But now that we're almost a year out and we still need some of those services. I didn't realize that you can go in and put projects right into their D O D website. And then they just list up and they can pick and choose which ones would be good training opportunities. And for whatever reason. They seem pretty gung ho about coming to Harley County. And they said. That if, if it's engineering services that we like, we talked about that when we were out looking at that culvert, you know, you could do the work. But if stuff needs to be engineered, we'd have to call somebody and they can provide those services. And all of the work they can provide, the only thing they can't pay for are any materials left behind. They can pay for all the labor, they can bring in heavy equipment because it's a training opportunity. They, even like concrete forms and stuff like that. Any of the materials that go into building it, as long as they can take them with them. The only things we'd have to pay for are the things that are left behind. And so if we can reengage. Klein Schmidt or whomever to get that study done, we could probably start inputting those projects when we identify alternatives right into there. And if they.
That's good.
Cherry pick one out and get it done in the next year or two, that's awesome. We can scratch it off our list. But I also introduced them via email to Brenda Inbritson. How you say your last name, the new manager from Burns, because to their question of how's recovery going? I wasn't sure and I felt like she'd have more insight to that. So hopefully she'll, and she is engaging with them now as well.
So there's, there's, I guess it would be kind of two sides to recovery. There's the infrastructure recovery, which would be city for the most part. And then there's private recovery, which is the homeowners and um through the hub. They create the long-term recovery groups. That's another, you know, on that side of things, there's another. I mean, they'll probably have different. Information as far as the number of people they've helped and then and the resource or the needs that are still out there. And maybe we'll get, I mean, you know, they came and talked to us here a few sessions back and asked for um some contribution. So maybe a few months or something, we have them come back and give us an update or something.
Yeah, we gave them ten.
Yeah. Um, anything from the roadmaster on flood?
Just currently, we're just working on, um, you know, trying to stay ahead of the curve as far as, you know, cleaning under bridges. We did one out in Riley, uh, we did one on Old Experiment. Um, you know, uh, for a better part of a week, we had two guys, uh, which doesn't affect a lot of. Um, the population, but we were up on Jack Mountain, a lot of that drainage, that damage. Um, when the spring runoff came last year and we um fixed up, you know, put some culverts in um. And dress that up as much as we could. And right now we're on full weight um and North Harni, cleaning some of those culverts. Um, just trying to stay ahead of it in case we do end up with the, you know, above average runoff. So that's what, you know, we're doing right now.
Good, thank you.
I I appreciate your comments about Jack Mountain. And I really feel like as a state, we need to start identifying what the the minimum accepted acceptable level of things like. Education, access to healthcare and transportation is another thing. And even though it's a limited number of citizens that live out there. When that road wiped out last year, they couldn't get out. And so I appreciate you guys taking care of it.
Anything else on flood mitigation? Um, new business. Uh, we got some resolutions for budget actions. Okay, so the first one is. Unexpected occurrence, home health and hospice resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight in the matter of of appropriating funds due to unexpected occurrence or condition. In regard to home health hospice fund two fifty-one. Um, just to summarize here a little bit, or uh, ORS two forty-three allows the appropriation of funds. When an unforeseen occurrence or condition which could not have been foreseen at the time of the preparation of the budget or could not have foreseen. Uh, pressing necessity for the expenditure occurs. And whereas an unforeseen occurrence or condition has occurred to win Harley County Home Health and Hospice. Received five thousand dollars from the Roadhouse Foundation. Uh, R H grant to purchase a point of care system. Um, I believe these are uh tablets that they can take out as they're um. Doing their home health visits and um they have to log the location and all that kind of stuff for for um. For reimbursable uh expense or uh allowable expenses through insurance. Uh, whereas this funding was not appropriated during the preparation of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Therefore, be it resolved that the following category appropriations be adjusted and approved for expenditure in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget year. Home Health and Hospice Fund two fifty-one, materials and supplies, uh, increase of five thousand dollars to two hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. Comments, discussions?
Glad they got it.
Uh, then I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight. In the matter of appropriating funds due to unexpected occurrence or condition in regard to home health hospice fund. Two fifty-one in the amount of five thousand dollars to be added to material and supplies.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight. In the matter of appropriation, appropriating funds due to unexpected occurrence or condition in regard to home health hospice fund two fifty-one. Any further discussion? All in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Here in none, motion carries. Uh, yeah, hello Bryce, are you there?
Yes, good morning. How are you guys?
Next item up is the road naming. Um, and I was told, uh, we have this, this packet here and um. Well, basically I'm just gonna let you go ahead, give the, give the brief on it, why and and what and all that good stuff.
So the, there's an access off of Crane Buchanan Road where there's actually a fourth house being built this time. There's already three homes using the access and per our um zoning ordinance. We are supposed to name the access after the third home um is being built. And so. We sent out, I sent out notifications to the um. The three people that already have a home out there and then the new homeowner that's going to be building a home. To this, to fill out the application, work together and come up with a road name that everybody can agree on. Um, and I've, we received an application back from Joe Whittle. Um, where he was suggesting lane fourteen. Um, which is, comes from the Meadowland. Um, there's a unrecorded Meadowlands map out there that is referring to this as. Road is lane fourteen. Um, and I have not heard back from any of the other homeowners. Um. And we are needing to get Joe Whittle's address so he can move forward with building a house.
Is there a. By ordinance, a notification time and and reply deadline criteria? I don't see it on this.
I don't, I don't think there's actual organs, but I haven't seen it in the organs where we have thirty days or. But we sent out the first notification October twentieth. Then we sent out a second one, November eleventh.
Do you know if the other um homeowner homeowners are uh live out of area or if they are residing?
I believe a couple, I, Joe Whistle took the application around and talked to the neighbors and. I guess there is some. Uh, issues with name changing her address. I mean, nobody wants to change her address. So he, Joe reached out to, I believe he contacted all three uh personally.
But since October twentieth, you haven't received any, any formal replies from the other landowners?
I, we have not.
And it looks like in the application, the primary. Proposed name is lane fourteen and the option is Steam's view.
Correct.
And with not having any opposition to lane fourteen being the first proposed option. That's what we're going with today, is that? Kind of where we're at?
That was, yeah, that's what. I mean, that's what Joseph Whistle put on the application and the um. There's, it's been hit or miss. There's a lane, what is out there? There's other lanes.
Well, lane thirteen.
To the north, there's lane thirteen. There's a couple of different. There's.
On this map, red, the red line would indicate where lane fourteen or the proposed lane fourteen would be?
Yes.
I guess I just want to be clear. So the neighbors of of Mr. Whistle, they receive correspondence directly from the county on this?
We sent out two notifications to the address for the tax statement goes.
Okay, I just want to make sure then.
Yes.
Would it be correct?
Correct to assume that the impetus for this policy in the past was a concern for public safety? So that emergency services could more quickly find residences?
Oh, correct. Yeah, I mean, that's the purpose of the zoning ordinance is to, for public safety. I mean, there's three addresses on there, there'll be four addresses and they're all Crane Buchanan. They're gonna, you're driving down Crane Buchanan, it's gonna be difficult to find the house.
So um, in the past, have we, as a county, received applications like this for just one? Signature only. I I know in the past, over the the years I've been on the court, there's usually additional signatures. Agreeing and.
Yeah, I know the past, not all the homeowners have signed the.
Right, at least.
I don't know if there's ever been just one.
And be, because I know this has been a contentious issue, I think it's important for the record to show. That according to our policy, this should have been done when the last residence, when in the third residence would have. Met the criteria, would have tripped the threshold to name that road. It was just an oversight on the county's part. And so this wasn't a effort led by the fourth home builder. It's, it's just adhering to our policy.
Correct.
Do, do these matters ever come to you? Uh, from the assessor's office or anywhere else when, when there's suddenly, there's now three residences on a area? Or is it usually initiated by the homeowner, a homeowner?
So it's initiated by the applications for an address for the building permit.
Ah, okay, thank you.
So the building department will say we need an address and that's the third or fourth address we need to. Assign a new road name.
So the, the county building department, planning, whatever, could be the applicant?
I guess, I mean, we're requiring somebody to fill out the application. So I mean, we're the applicant, I guess. There's no fees associated with the, this application. And like the last one, because somebody wanted to. Wanted to change the name of the road, but this is, we're requiring. This process.
The establishment of a name now.
Yes.
That's an interesting question that we posed though, because that might help. Avoid some of this contention in the future if when that third one happens, it's.
The county automatically takes action.
Yeah, and we want, we want residents to suggest names for sure, but it's, it's because of the county. It's not because of that one.
Yeah, with with Rick Staff or building official online, should we just ask Rick? Whether that is something that could be incorporated into the process of the permitting?
Some kind of a triggering.
A trigger where?
Yeah, Rick, are you there?
Yeah, the, the state building code requires an address for permitting. Um, many times it takes a little bit of time, like if we do a service for a new structure. Um, we end up with a address pending or a zero address. Um, until we get that, but the state does require that we have an address for permitting. And sometimes it can drag out closer to the end of the project before it gets done, but typically before we. Will provide a final inspection and a certificate of occupancy, that address has to be in place.
So Bryce, correct me if I'm wrong, in the past, with two residences on a road like this. If the address would have actually been on Crane Buchanan Road with maybe a, a mile marker number or something like that, you know. Uh, but then once you get three or more, then it's, it's hard to delineate three addresses on that same point. On Crane Buchanan Road, is that correct? Then it's, it's hard to delineate three addresses on that same point on Crane Buchanan Road, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, I mean, it's. Now there's four addresses and you really can't. Determine what addresses are out there, I mean, the sequence of the numbers should, is based off the state plane coordinates, I mean, it should. Further you go north. The address gets larger, but the houses are to the west and there, so it's.
Sorry to interrupt, but it really should be on the first structure. Um, because as Bryce knows and I know, it's very difficult to find even one house on some of these roads off of, you know, a main thoroughfare.
Yeah, if it's back in a mile or two and you're using a, un- unless it's a private drive. That that road actually is on that property and goes just to that house. Um, you get. It gets a little cloudy as to exactly what Crane Buchanan address it is. So, um. Resolution.
A way to like, maybe the first or the second address, hey. The third address comes in, I don't know if you put that on like the. Land use or the building permit first, your address will change if there's a third home coming in, give them a heads up, I mean.
Yeah.
Or say, you could potentially petition to name the road right now. So you won't have to change your address. Like Rick was saying, maybe the first or second home, give them an option to name the road.
Yeah. So is that, that, that we might need to look at our ordinance and amend our ordinance?
That'd be a good review.
Well, but then, so, uh, question for the roadmaster. Now, I know these are private roads, they're not part of the county road system, but. Um. These, based on this map, it looks like it's basically running along a. Yeah.
It's not a section. Yeah, all the middle land roads usually are either on that half section or section.
What was I going with that, I lost it, um. Well, versus a private drive that just would go onto that property itself. That, that address could be Crane Buchanan. But if a road has the potential of going by multiple properties, that it could service multiple properties, then we'd need to name that road. Potentially on the first construction.
Yeah, and I, and again, right, that doesn't really come into play with us, because again, it's. For the foreseeable future, if. For some reason, there gets enough people on that road, um, and they've invested, um. Skin in the game to get it up to the county road standards and they come to the county court and ask. You know, for it to be taken into the road system, I, it, it really. It, it really doesn't matter to us whether it's lane fourteen or Steensview or whatever, there's.
The name itself doesn't matter or anything, it's just like in, you can see on this map. That, that this one road potentially serves one, two, three. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine properties. And if that's the case, if this, if this was all one block of property and it was one road, then it's, it's just a private road on their property. But when we have a road that potentially is gonna serve three or more. Three or more properties, wow, even one or more, that. Two or more, I guess you'd say two or more, but has the potential to serve two or more properties, then we should probably name it at the very beginning.
I'd say for sure when the second one goes in, because if you only had one on there, you could have that sticker out there on the road and it would follow that. Increasing sequence to the north, but once that second one goes in. I think there's a need for road name.
But again, like Bryce was saying, if you do it from the very first property, then people don't have to go through a, an address change.
Yeah, give them the option.
Yeah.
Well, is there, is there a cost because of road signs, is there a significant cost?
Um, for this application, because we initiated it, so if like the last previous one that came to you guys. They wanted to change the name, so they covered the cost, there's an application.
So the cost as far as the sign, Bryce and the planning department handle land end of it and. I donate the post and then they have a, a contractor that comes in and puts the, puts the sign there, so that's about the order for the cost that we incur. Is the post.
Yeah, so I mean, the actual cost is the contractor and then the cost of the sign, which is. Hundred, I don't know, hundred dollars.
Well, it might be worth revisiting that ordinance in the future, but for the time being, what we have before us, I think we can act on this one. Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty one in the matter of road naming in the county of Harney. State of Oregon, the Harney County Court hereby resolves as follows, whereas a plat- application has been made. To name a road in Harney County and whereas the Harney County zoning ordinance section nine requires that any private road. That provides access to three or more buildings and require. And requires a name in order to promote the health, safety and welfare of the public. Uh, section nine point one zero zero. Three point eight point three and Harney, and whereas the Harney County Court has receipt, has reviewed. The application and found the proposed road name to be consistent with Harney County zoning ordinances. Section nine point one hundred. Um, now therefore it is, it is hereby resolved that the new name of the road. In the county shall be called. And we're gonna go with the first option, lane fourteen?
Yes.
And Bryce, would that be for a suffix, is that lane fourteen road or?
Lane fourteen lane.
Lane. Uh, the name of the road in the county shall be called lane fourteen lane. Accordingly, all residents on the said road will be notified of the change. Assignment of addresses will then be made to follow Harney County and state addressing requirements. Dated this twenty fourth day of November, twenty twenty five. Any further com- uh, discussion? Motion?
Move to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash thirty one in the matter of road naming in the county of Harney, state of Oregon, the new road name shall be called. Lane fourteen lane.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty one in the matter of road naming in the county of Harney, state of Oregon. The new, uh, the new name of the road in the county shall be called lane fourteen lane. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Bryce, I gotta tell you while we're signing this, we already talked about it earlier, but at the AOC conference. Uh, there was a company that. Can provide services for other map layers for the county to have available to citizens. And after he made his sales pitch, when I told him the services and layers that we already have available, he was, he was kind of shocked that we were able to offer. Such, such thorough madness, so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Next, next, uh, you bet, thank you, and, and as I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, you do a lot of work around the state for other counties and. And other entities, so. Again, Harney County leading the way with. Services to others.
Yeah.
Next new business, intra, intra fund transfer of appropriations, fund three twenty eight, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine. Uh, in the matter of an intra fund transfer of appropriations within categories for fund three twenty eight, information systems, systems reserve. So what we did, what, what we're doing here basically is, um, and. During budget time, I didn't create a, a materials and supplies line and I was under the impression that we could, uh. Expand out of the capital outlay line. Um, so basically we're creating a materials and supply line, moving twenty thousand dollars from. Capital outlay to materials and supplies. Any questions, discussion? Motion?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine in the matter of entry fund transfer of appropriations within categories for fund three twenty eight, information system reserve.
Uh, that's a decrease. In one line and an increase another twenty thousand dollars a second?
A motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine in the matter of an intra fund transfer of appropriate, of appropriations. Within categories for fund three twenty eight, information systems reserve. Which will equate to a, a decrease of twenty thousand dollars from the capital outlay line. New balance of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars and an increase of twenty thousand and a new line of materials and supplies for twenty thousand dollars. All in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, next item under new businesses, county is court order for county land sale. Um, this piece of property is, um. Let me see, it's the. Four ninety seven South Kearney, um, also previously known as Kirby's Thrift Land, I believe it was. Um. In the process of putting, putting a property up for sale that has come to the county's ownership by foreclosure or other means. Um, can be done applicant, can be one of two ways, the county can be the applicant and put it up for, for sale or an individual. Uh, can, uh, be the applicant and request that it be put up for sale. In this case, um, I know there's some interest out there, so, uh, we, the county are putting forth. Uh. The application. So this is the first step. Uh, court, court will approve or decline to sell the property. And then it'll be advertised for four weeks and a share sale will be held on.
So according to the statute. We have to try and sell it for twenty five percent of the R M V plus the processing fee and this is in alignment with that. Oh, the new. Court case precedence that came out?
Yeah, most of, most of. That court case, as I have learned more and still continue to learn more on, uh, Hennepin V. Or Tyler V. Hennepin out of. Michigan? Yeah, back east somewhere, um, is that it primarily, most of the rule changes came on residential properties. If the value of the properties, um, R M V is assessed at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more, it has to be appraised. And it has to be sold by a realtor. This property in neither case. Is there, it's not a residential property and, and, uh. I'm not sure, what's the assist, what's the R M V on it? Uh, it looks like a hundred and thirty four thousand, six fifty. So, for the most part, yes, uh, now the, the, the question that I'm not sure about yet. And we can deal with it after we sell it, is the excess proceeds beyond the back taxes and, and whatnot the county would keep. Uh, and then distribute as normal taxes would be, but, um, any, any fees or, or. That we would keep ourselves, beyond that, any surplus. Still may have to go and be treated under that new law as surplus and be reported to the previous owner so that they could make a claim if they. So choose, and then we would forward the proc- or those surplus funds to the, uh, Oregon Department Treasury. And they hold on to it and actually process.
So some of the process is still not been finalized at this, from the state, is that correct?
There's that gray area in between, because I've asked the question several times, does this apply to county or properties that the county's had in possession for? Twenty, thirty years. Long before this court case and, and I've been told, yes, it does. And then I've also been told that, that only probably is back as far as the decision on this case, anything prior to that. So I asked the question, so anything prior to that, did we treat it like we used to do and we keep the excess proceeds? That part of it, I haven't gotten a straight answer on, a clarification on.
Do you know who would be the final, um, determinant of the answer?
Well, Department of Treasury is not, because they're only dealing with what we would send to them and then the claims, because they treat it as unclaimed property. Um, so it's probably gonna take maybe a legislative. Uh, counsel. Uh, opinion on it or. I, I'm still working with AOC on it, to, you know, because there's a lot of nuances this that they think about.
Is our assessor, uh, does she get any? I- i- information and guidance about that through her?
Not that part of it, there, so there's, there's. Two, three steps to this process, you go through the tax foreclosure process, which there was some changes there a little bit. And they're up on that portion of it, but then once the county actually has deeded ownership of the property. From then until disposal is the time that, that there's some gray area in between there, and then once disposal. Those properties that have surplus property or surplus funds. Um. Are transferred to Department of Treasury, that portion of it has been, has been clearly delineated and the, the assessor's portion of it has been clearly deal delineated. But it's that section in between and those properties that were in possession before the case law was established, the precedent is pretty poor decision. But we can go ahead and sell this and figure it out. I'd rather get rid of it if there's potential interest out there, I'd rather get rid of it, get it off the county's. Books and back on the tax rolls and everything else. It's open to the public, granted, I've, I've received interest from one individual that I know of. But it's open to the public, so anybody can come and bid on it, it's, it's an open bid process, um. And through the advertisement of it, if anybody else is interested, they'll show up and bid.
Okay.
I would be interested in reevaluating that resolution twenty twenty one dash fifteen. That sets it at twenty five percent of R M V because. To me, if we could get the judgment amount of ten thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars out of it, then that would put us even. And I'd be all right with that, and what this is requiring is. Almost thirty thousand dollars more than that. And if that is an impediment to us getting. Being made whole again by receiving the judgment amount, because we're overvaluing properties. I would prefer to not try to profit off of them, if we could just dispose of them. That makes sense, maybe I'm the only one who feels somewhat good.
And, and I would agree, on, once, once upon a time, you know, before Tyler V. Hennepin, um. Anything in excess of the back taxes and fees. Were then distributed to all the, all of the total, all of the taxing districts. Normal, as is, it would be normal, just normal, uh, distribution. I believe, um, did the county keep that? I'll have to find out again on that, see this, this where this is, I can't remember if previously any excess surplus the county kept. Or if it was just distributed like it normally would be distributed, that part I don't remember, I know the back taxes would get distributed. Like they normally would, but the excess beyond the, beyond those. Back bills, so to speak, I, I'll have to, I'll have to check on that, but. Now, instead of either being retained by the county or distributed to those, to those, uh, taxing districts. Any excess proceeds, surplus proceeds go to the Department of Treasury. And then the past owner of when it was, of when it was foreclosed on or their heirs could file a claim for that. And, but I'm of the same opinion, I'd rather just get it back on to the, to the tax rolls. Would, you know, it is what it is at this point, and just soon get it back into private ownership. And back on the tax rolls and that people use it for their purposes. So the question then is, it before us, um, is do we wanna sell this piece of property? Court order number twenty twenty five dash zero eight in the matter of order approving petition. Of county land sale property number one, three, five, six.
So, so what form of motion will you require, since this is a court order? We have the authority to approve a court order, are we?
County court.
Oh.
You come to judge, yeah.
Sure. Uh, yes, this is a, uh, in the county court.
Thank you for asking, I see.
In the county court of the state of Oregon, order of saving county property for Harney County. Basically, it's just, it's. It's, uh. You know, a resolution, an order, a court order. So I would really, all I need if we're, if we're in agreeance that we wanna dispose of it and put it. So I would really, all I need if we're, if we're in agreeance that we want to dispose of it and put it out there and trying to, try to get it off the county's. Books. Then we just need to approve this order, then we'll move forward with advertising.
Good with that, um, I would like to um, move. That we approve court order number twenty twenty five dash zero eight in the matter of. Order approving petition of county land sale property number one three five six as discussed.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded uh, to approve court order number twenty twenty five dash zero eight in the matter of. In the matter of order approving petition. Excuse me, of county land sale property number, uh, count number one three five six. More specifically, uh, address is four ninety seven South Kearney Avenue, Burns, Oregon nine seven seven two uh, zero. Uh, and then. On a normal land sale, a piece of property out in the county, we would ask the, the roadmaster if he had any interest in it. I don't suppose that a piece of property in town would have any interest to the road department.
No.
Okay. So having said that, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? And hearing none motion carries dated this. Twenty fourth, right?
With the resolution of that mentioned court case, should we expect some more of these coming forward soon?
Um, I would like to, and this is something we can talk about in a, in a future county court session, but I would like to, it's just the timing of this one. Um, there's people that are potentially interested in it, economic wise and everything, it's in town. If any properties I'd really like to get rid of are the ones that are in town. But um, I, I, a further conversation would be that maybe uh, this spring. Once specifically, so we kind of got it all narrowed down and know exactly what that court case is gonna entail on ca- on pieces that we've had. Uh, for numerous years. Um, that we do maybe take half of them and do a, a spring sale and half of them and do a summer sale. Some of them are gonna sell and some of them aren't, and they're gonna stay in county ownership, but, but you never know what'll sell and what won't sell either.
So in your discussions with A O C, are they saying that there is probably a legislative? Matter that would need to clarify more?
No, just a legislative uh, interpretation.
An interpretation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, legislative counsel. Is, as I got a feeling that's where I'm probably gonna have to go because I haven't gotten that clear answer on what do we do with properties that have been in county ownership for years.
Or legislative interpretations, the kind of saying that we uh, would then engage with our. State representative or senator on, and so would it be something to, that they could potentially address in a short session?
I don't, you don't have to do it during the session.
Okay.
I think, I think they can do it outside of session.
Okay.
Um, but I'll check with, with Representative Owens.
We, you know, have, have that meeting on the night of his town hall. I'm just writing down things, so I remember, just little questions, is this, is this gonna be moving forward or is this something that they'll be waiting to hear? You know, from people in towns about, so, thank you.
Who, who would. We already have a double set of rules, if we follow, if we follow pre Tyler V. Hennepin decision. We're gonna follow rules of one way of how we disposed of surplus proceeds. And anything after that, we're gonna follow a different set of rules, so that's where I'm at, I don't know which, which to do yet.
And which uh, A O C staffer do you primarily work upon?
Uh, I wanna say that, that me, that task force was, uh. Was it Justin, it may have been Justin as well, yeah. Any further discussion?
I think that's a great idea to try and do them in a chunk, and if we can set a precedence, I think we might get more engagement for people interested in properties.
You know, you can see, if you look at the properties around the county, this is divulging a little, or diverging a little bit, but um. If you look at the properties around the county, there are bits and pieces of property that belong to people from all over the United States. They had come up for sale at some time and somebody thought, oh yeah, I'm gonna buy that piece of property in Harney County, Oregon. And, you know, as long as they continue to pay the property taxes on it, we don't have any issues with it. And I got a feeling that it, with all the little pieces that we might want to sell, we might end up with somebody from Florida that wants to buy a piece of Harney County. Um, but again, as long as they're paying the taxes and they're responsible for it, it doesn't matter who owns it. Um, but that's what we could end up with. And you could end up with, it's a piece that's right next to a, an adjoining landowner that wants to consolidate and maybe they bid on it. Or, you know, who knows?
I, I'm just saying that, you know, it's always been in the past too, a, a concern of the county court is when those properties are sold. You know, from those people that are in Florida or whatever, it's access. And that becomes the biggest issue, you know, there are realtors all over that buy those. And then resell them as the little slice of heaven out in the middle of Capitol Valley, and then they have no access. And they don't know that until they show up here and pull out a map and start looking at it, so that part of it becomes a nightmare. I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, it has in the past, so.
So how does that play, I mean, on the county then, when we, is then we end up with, uh, like we just did with the, um. The right of access easement type of thing that we just dealt with off of.
Well, and again, I, you know, it, it goes back to that, you know, when you learn in real estate law that somebody cannot be landlocked, well. That's, that's not true, i- it happens, so again, I, you know, how the county um, can clear that up? Or, or I, I, I don't know, I just know it's, it, it's been an issue in the past.
So be a topic that we'd wanna research before putting them up maybe then.
I've, I've encouraged years ago, the uh, realtors, the uh. County planning department, et cetera, to make it clear on the topic of. Fire, you know, putting out fires out in the unincorporated areas. To please stress that they, they need to know that they're not gonna be covered by, you know, Burns Fire Department. You know, stuff like that, and they'll just kind of go, you know, because they wanna sell, they still wanna sell the property, so they're. Not gonna make a deal out of it, but I just like, you know, naive purchasers to be aware. In general, just in life, you know, I prefer people. You know, a lot of these people don't know these things, they don't think you ask these things and they just. What they need out is.
They need to do their due diligence and a lot of times.
They do, they do, and, and I remember even before we moved here, you know, one of the attractions was. Land was affordable out here, right?
All right, um, any other conversation? So then a motion has been made and seconded, I would call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Hearing none motion carries. So our next topic is the supplemental budget hearing, it's not scheduled till eleven thirty. We can um, move ahead with uh, correspondence. Scheduling, any other topics like that, or we can take a brief recess and. Come back at eleven thirty.
Let's move forward and get to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So then we'll just move down the line, and the next topic then would be uh, correspondence, any correspondence? I have, and I don't know if we all got one of these or not. But I got a, uh, a letter from. The Harney County Democratic Central Committee. Uh, addressed directly to me, so I don't know if you guys got one or not, but it says, please find and close the resolution of the Harney County Democrats concerning our staunch support. For Oregon's vote by mail system as it faces threats of severe federal overreach from the Trump administration. We urge you to continue to strengthen Oregon's vote by mail system for the twenty twenty six midterms and all future elections. Had to be resolute in defense of the constitutional right of each state to run elections as they see fit. Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero one, a resolution of the Harney County Democrats regarding the threat. To Oregon's elections proposed by President Trump's twenty twenty five executive order outlawing vote by mail systems. Whereas active citizen engagement is cons- is uh, a cornerstone of health democratic society and high. High voter turnout, it is a key metric in measuring of said engagement. Whereas Oregon's vote by mail process had a seventy six point three percent turnout rate in twenty twenty four general election. And third highest percentage of all the state. Whereas Oregon ranked first in the union in voter participation in the twenty twenty two midterm election at sixty six point nine percent. Whereas Oregon became the first state in the nation to implement voting by mail beginning in nineteen ninety eight. Providing a template for other states to emulate, whereas from two thousand. To two thousand nineteen, out of a total of Oregon sixty one million ballots cast, only thirty eight criminal convictions. For voter fraud were recorded, making for a, a miniscule percentage of. Point zero 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 six percent. Uh, whereas President Trump's twenty twenty five executive order outlawing vote by mail system is unconstitutional. Violating Article One, Section Four, which being a blatant attack on states' rights. And the tenet, tenth amendment. Now therefore, the Harney County Democratic Central Committee resolves. Section one to urge Oregon state and Harney County officials to continue to utilize and strengthen Oregon's vote by mail system. For the twenty twenty six midterms and all future elections. Section two to ask our federal, state and county officials to be resolute in defense of the constitutional right of each state. To run elections as they see fit. Approved by the Harney County Democratic Central Committee, October fifth, twenty twenty five, Isabel Flrod, Chair. That's the only, only correspondence I have, I don't know. How, you know, if I wanna discuss that, or.
I, I think it's good that you read it out loud and um, that we've heard from them, they wanted us to hear their thoughts on that. I don't think. As a body, we're necessarily advocating one way or another on that.
It's. That would be the question, I guess, as a body, whether we would wish to take a position on it or. Differ to the state since it's. The Secretary of State.
Gonna be in the courts anyway.
Yeah.
I think, but uh, it's good for thought, it's how I look at it.
That's all I have for correspondence.
I think in response to some of their requests and that, it's important to note that our county clerk is very strongly involved. With the Clerk's Association of the, the whole nation and the state and has a pretty good pulse on that, so I feel like we as a county are pretty well informed.
Want me to just go back in this envelope, or this folder? I'm sorry, and I, and I agree. You know, I have my personal preferences, but as far as the body goes. Of the county court and what the people of Harney County would like for us to do, I mean, that would be.
I think there's difference of opinion within the county and I don't think taking, advocating one stand is necessarily appropriate in this matter.
I mean, I get, it's, it's statute, it's law, so our, our um, how it's being done right now anyway, I mean, statute and law of state of Oregon. And having taken an oath upon office to, to support and defend and, and. Bide by the laws of the state of Oregon at this time, I guess we would be in, you know, just to make sure that we're following what, what guidance is coming from the state right now. Any other correspondence? Scheduling, um, meeting schedules. It's a short week this week, um. I have a G E O D C board meeting. I have. It's this week. Next week. You have anything? Next county court session will be December third, so it's kind of a short timeframe between then and now. We have Rep. Owens's town hall. Uh, pre-meeting at four thirty, I believe, and then his, the public portion of it, is that at? Five or six?
Six.
Six.
That is a joint, is it joint Senator McLean and Rep. Owens Town Hall?
It is, I did notice that Senator McLean sent out a notice of town hall for the same time, so I'm presuming they're together on the. On their circuit. It's all I have until next week.
I just wanna mention that at our next county court meeting on December third, that is one of the days where I do have a new NACO. Or Justice Public Safety Zoom meeting, so if we can, as we're starting to do on a regular basis, if we can recess. In time for me to do that and re-adjourn if we still have business.
Do you know, do we have much on the next county court session already?
No.
Agenda?
Not very.
So hopefully we get the next one done before noon.
We actually have nothing on here, but I know that Treasury.
There's a couple.
Treasury media is working on a few things.
I think I would like to um, maybe get on the December seventeenth county court meeting agenda, just for your information to report out to you. Both on these economic developments sessions I have.
Any other meetings to know? Regular county court sessions, December third and December seventeenth.
The Wolf Advisory Committee is meeting uh, six P M, December second, and that's when applications for degradation and prevention are due.
They're due here at the county and then where, when are they due to the state?
Prior to January first, I believe.
We got about ten minutes, any general deliberation?
I'm very short today, um. In, when I was at the Association of Oregon County um, conference. Rural Prosperity Partners, who was the uh, folks that were our contractors when we were doing broadband work. Uh, gave me one of these cards for a grant pilot, take the friction out of grants. It's launching in February and it is an, an online grant service that helps counties and cities quickly find the right grants. Um, auto draft, high quality applications and track awards all in one easy platform. It's basically gonna be a forty one dollar a month subscription, and I don't know whether that will be useful at, at all. But it, at least if it's good, and if that was something that here at the county level for any of our departments, we wanted to find out. And I, I could look into it if it's worth seeing, does that mean if a, a county subscribes that we can let all our departments use it or not? But I thought I would operate in that generally speaking, the uh, the individual that present to me is, is a pretty good. High quality person, so um, I'll, if you want, I'll just find out more answers specifically. Um, that could just augment things without, if, if it turns out to be what I think it is, um, and. Back on when I attended the strategic doing training that was held out at, at the tribe, I mean, for a few days. In October, what was it, November, um, anyway, it was, it was a good, it was a good training, but really. And it was mostly really common sense things put all together, but. if you're really going to be implementing your strategies, doing things, it's it's and you probably know this, but you know, it's important to just keep things moving, even if there'll be times when a lot is happening and times when not so much. And just to do the check in is and and even with our own um team here at the county is, so what's happened in the last thirty days? And what are you going to be working on the next thirty days? You know, just kind of keep you know, keep that expectation that we know, we know you're doing work, let us know what has happened, you know, maybe something stalled, maybe something extra happened and now we're working on it. Same thing, I think, when we when we are doing economic development work. We're never in the future. I think that's just a good way to keep whoever's either reporting into us or whether we're talking amongst ourselves, and so so we just did this, and now the next step is this, or another thing that's going to be happening is this. So I just want to at least get back to you on that and that's it. Thank you. Oh, well, just the last session I'll be holding will be December second, and I might be a few minutes late to the the pre-meeting um representative Owens Town Hall meeting, but I I will be coming to that and um I look forward to reporting out to you once that's complete. Thank you.
All right, there was a let's judge Norindo first, but
No, go ahead.
There was a legal decision recently at the federal level that reaffirmed an earlier decision by the United States Fish and Wildlife Service that found that wolves do not recover a national recovery plan because they have reached substantial numbers. And so that legal finding, I think, will make it a lot easier to move forward and potentially de-listing the gray wolf. But there will still have to be some legislation passed that I thought that was a good move in the right direction. I I was, I would be curious in the future in a future meeting, if it could even be an agenda item to learn more about and discuss how we handle cross-training in the county, when I think about those departments that I think only have one person in them, but like payroll or the treasurer, and I I made it, I always use the expression, you know, if somebody gets hit by a truck and they're gone, not realizing that Tammy really did get hit by a truck a couple of years ago. But if somebody does get hit by a truck or quits or gets sick, I just would like to know more about, and maybe we can discuss some policy around making sure those crucial positions are cross-trained. Uh, there was a joint meeting last week about water issues with the tribe and the cities. And they will be meeting again going forward, but just trying to get everybody on the same page, especially prior to this December Water Resource Commission meeting. To make sure that we're all aligned and have a unified voice, and the tribe has some things going on with their special shared federal sovereignty status. They have some agreements they're working on with the state, and so we probably won't do too much in terms of really declaring our unified message until after their stuff is settled with the state, but it was good to have a discussion with the four local governments in the county. We've been in, Harney County's been invited to host the Blue Mountain Intergovernmental Council. And they were invited to host them, I think, on December ninth is the next regular meeting. But I suggested that if that is too far to people to travel, it wouldn't hurt my feelings, and this morning at the Steering Committee meeting, they decided that perhaps in February would be a more substantial meeting to have in person. And people are willing to come to Harney County, but I wanted to bring it up to the court because there we would have to incur the cost of providing lunch if we have them. I think we've maybe had them once in the last year since I've been here.
Years I've been involved, the first uh time that we hosted was at the community center. And um you know, we we had it catered with lunch. And that was in the early years, and then it was out at the Forest Service Building three years ago, uh in person here, and I I remember, did you go to that?
I went.
And I think that was more like subway sandwiches and and stuff.
Twenty three? Twenty four, early twenty four, maybe twenty three, late twenty, something like that.
Yeah, I know the one years that one of the the other big.
There may have been other places, but those were the two that I remember attending here and that we held. Um, I definitely if they want to hold it here, I hope it's good weather because people will not thrive in the dual speed, a bunch of Zoom people and us, you know, and the facilitator. So February might be good, might not be good, you know, but uh just due to our the travel to get here. Um, but if they, if it's to be held here, I definitely uh I think we can fund lunch, don't you, Judge?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and I'm glad you, so yeah, there's general support, and I will keep telling them the whole, the importance is the relationships, and so if we're going to have it so far away from everybody during inclement weather, then I don't think it cools us to host it, and so I think we're all on the same page with that now, but the idea of having that at the community center, when I know a potential date, I will reach out to H T P, who now manages that owns that center, and they may be able to handle the catering, so we wouldn't incur expense. We'll see. The the one last thing I had was we had a discussion about wildlife services, and right now we've been focusing a little bit more on the Wolf Advisory Committee and N R A C for the last month has been pretty quiet, but that is something that they will jump back into is trying to find some partners to help us fund that. The one thing I wanted to share is after a pretty lengthy conversation with the AFIS fellow that was at A O C. In in my mind, maybe it was just me, but I kept thinking it's costing us around one hundred twenty five thousand dollars a year. And our guy that's administering services getting paid about sixty, that doesn't jive. What I failed to take into account was with benefits and everything else, you can basically double what his salary is. So I don't think the administrative costs are quite as heavy as I had previously thought. AFIS also said that it is very commonplace to partner with other groups such as Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation or Sportsman's Alliance. And I just, I didn't know if everyone, if everyone else thought, oh, that's obvious, the reason it's so much is because it's our personnel plus all their benefits, but I hadn't thought of that.
I've gotten used to.
Well, there's.
Subling.
Yeah. Yeah. It's it's probably about half. So if he's making sixty five, his benefits are probably another thirty thousand, so so labor costs are of that hundred and twenty four, I think it is, are probably about ninety to ninety five thousand dollars for labor costs. The rest of it is administration because the because the federal government is taking their cut, their ten percent or fifteen percent cut for administration, and then the other parts, the rest of it, the balance of that then would be vehicle costs, air, air, aircraft costs, that kind of stuff.
Well, and I thought about it during correspondence, but it's not correspondence from or to me, but I did just learn I think Eastern Oregon County's Association is going to sign on to a letter that Representative Bobby Levy is going to send to Wildlife Services. Basically calling for more accountability with the role that they play with wolf management in the state of Oregon. And I know that we heard at our last meeting how important Wildlife Services is to how we administer wolf management, so we'll see what comes of that.
I greatly acknowledge the benefit of having that service. It's trying to figure out how to fund it.
And I have a an email almost ready to send you guys, but I haven't yet, I where I I put a couple of links to Oregon State Legislative Bill to Revive Predator Control District Survives Legislative Deadline, you know, Bill Track, et cetera, you know, Rep. Owens has worked on it in the past. Um the old uh bill that allowed it sun, was allowed to sunset a few years ago, unfortunately, and so we don't, didn't have an option here as a county to put it to the voters if they want to establish special district. I really would like to see that as go to the voters at some point and see, because it's so important and we don't know you know, our our financial health may turn around in a few years, or it may continue to be a very tight budget, you know, for for a while, and and we don't want the print bear wildlife services to lapse.
With that special district and what was proposed or in the past, is that for would that be for all unincorporated areas of of Harney County, or did it cover everything?
Well, I don't know. I mean, we never did put it to the voters, um because the ability to do that sunsetted with when our finances were at that point where we were looking to to think about that. But in my view, you know, here's the role in town as well, uh or in the incorporated areas as well, so I don't know, but um I just, I just see that as being a continual important need in our county. Um, and I know that it would just be great if we if we, it could be a special district and then we, there's some secure funding for it. That's how I look at it.
It is one thirty or eleven thirty. Um, eleven thirty A M., Harney County Court uh will recess at this time. And we shall um convene in um a budget hearing, Harney County Budget Hearing. So um
Supplemental budget.
Supplemental budget hearing, excuse me. Um before us, we have Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty seven in the matter of adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations. So what we've done, and in the last in the last county court session, I believe it was, we did a resolution renaming the Jail Reserve Fund to the Jail Capital Improvement Fund. Uh, and this was a pre pre-work to uh be able to move funds from a couple of different funds into this one for the jail project. One of the funds being the um what is the the three million dollars from the um O J D? Actually, I take that back. Okay, so in the Jail Reserve Fund originally is where we were had budgeted the three million dollars from O J D for the uh court-related services portion of the project. So that that's already in this fund. Then then we're proposing to move three hundred thousand dollars from Fund two two three, which is the nine one one fund into this into this jail uh capital improvement fund for costs associated with that portion of the project for for re- reallocating space and developing that space for a new nine one one dispatch center. Um, but still housed underneath the Sheriff's Office jail complex. And then also moving funds from the um So I was wrong on that. The Jail Reserve Fund is the fund that holds the the dollars in it that we've been putting into it over the years and those two special one-time pill payments that the county received in twenty three and twenty four of four and a half million dollars. What do we rename? Which fund was it that we renamed? Um, but we renamed that fund as a place as a place to put these funds, to consolidate these funds and then operate out of that instead of operating out of three separate funds. So those funds from Fund three twenty five Jail Reserve will be transferred into this Jail Capital Improvement Fund as well. Um, so we end up with a material and supplies that was um budgeted at two million. That was that three million dollar, but what did we call it?
This says that last uh county court, it was Fund two thirty one.
Uh huh.
Uh, and renamed it the Jail Capital one percent fund.
Does it say what it was previous?
It does not. Uh.
Wasn't.
Huh?
Courthouse Annex.
Courthouse Annex Fund, okay. So we renamed the Courthouse Annex Fund number two three one to be the Jail Capital Improvement Fund, and that fund already has budgeted in it the three million dollars from Oregon Judicial Department. Um, so we're moving the three hundred thousand from Fund two two three nine one one and the um and the the balance of the um Jail Reserve Fund of five million two hundred eighty six thousand nine hundred seventy eight dollars to 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 the newly renamed Fund two three one. What'll what'll happen is all this money will then be appropriated into the capital outlay line. And um expenses can be paid out of that one fund and that one line for the project. Resolution reads uh this beginning twenty fourth day of two thousand twenty five and a day set aside for supplemental budget hearing of the Harney County Court and their being present William Hart, County Judge, Patty Dorrell, County Commissioner, Rob Frank, County Commissioner, and Fund two two three, which is nine one one fund. Be it resolved, the county court of the of Harney County hereby adopts the supplemental budget presented at the supplemental budget hearing held on November twenty four, two thousand twenty five in the total sum of one million two hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy seven dollars now on file at the Harney County on file at the office of the Harney County Clerk. Be it further resolved that the additional amounts for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twenty five and for the categorical purposes shown below are hereby appropriated as follows. Transfer of three hundred thousand dollars from the nine one one Fund two two three uh which is an increase of three thousand, three hundred thousand dollars. Total additional appropriations for this fund is three hundred thousand. Fund two three one Jail Capital Improvement Fund, be it resolved that the County Court of Harney County hereby adopts the supplemental budget presented at the supplemental budget hearing held on November twenty four, two thousand twenty five in the total sum of eight million five hundred and eighty six thousand nine hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars now on file at the office of the Harney County Clerk. Be it further resolved that the additional amounts for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twenty five and for the categorical purposes shown below are hereby appropriated as follows. Materials and supplies uh decreased by two million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to to now reflect zero. A transfer line created of twenty four thousand five hundred. Now, the transfer line will be decreased by a hundred and twenty five thousand five hundred with a new balance of twenty four thousand five hundred. And the capital outlay line will increase by eight thousand five hundred and sixty two dollars, sixty two thousand four hundred and seventy eight dollars. Um Fund two three five Jail Reserve, be it resolved that the county court in Harney County hereby adopts the supplemental budget presented at the supplemental budget hearing held on November twenty four, two thousand twenty five in the total sum of five million two hundred and eighty six thousand nine hundred and seventy eight dollars now on file at the office of the Harney County Clerk, be it further resolved that the additional amounts for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twenty five and for the categorical purposes shown below are hereby appropriated as follows. Transfer of of five hundred um an increased transfer of four million seven hundred and eighty six thousand nine hundred and seventy six dollars, which would transfers. As a listening fund balance. Can you ask Treasury Heaney, well, she has time to step back for just a moment. Just want to make sure I'm summarizing this properly.
Maybe what you're.
Maybe what you're asking for clarification from will answer my question too, but I don't understand if nine-one-one emergency is already budgeted to be a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in deficit. And we're adding three hundred thousand dollars basically in expenditures because it's a transfer. How, what will we do? If they're in such a large deficit?
So that's not deficit. Are you referring to the, the one million, two hundred sixteen thousand or are you looking at the budget sheet itself? So I'm, I'm trying to to
Muddle through?
Yeah. Um, so what we're doing is the the jail capital improvement fund is the fund that we had the three million dollars, the courthouse annex dollars, right?
We're changing.
And we changed the name to it, right? So it already has three million dollars in it. Then we're gonna move three hundred thousand dollars from the, from Fund two-two-three-nine-one-one fund into that, into that fund. And then we're also gonna move the balance of the jail reserve fund, five million, two eighty-six, nine seventy-six with that fund as well. And it'll have a total, total capital outlay line of eight million, five hundred sixty-two thousand and four seventy-eight?
It's been a while since we did this, but I assume it is my correct guess.
Um, so then the, the question that Commissioner Frank had was on the nine-one-one fund. You, you're looking at?
Hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars revenues under expenditures. There are like seven hundred and something for revenues and nine hundred and sixteen for expenditures. And we're gonna increase their expenditure by adding three hundred thousand dollars in the budget, which means there'll be almost five hundred thousand dollars in deficit for their budget, doesn't it?
Let me look at what I sent you.
So, so the three hundred thousand dollars is, um, out of their beginning fund balance?
Let me just take a peek. So their beginning fund balance, we are, was budgeted at five hundred thousand. And we are increasing the beginning fund balance budget to eight hundred thousand, which is an increase of three million because their actual was eight hundred and twenty-one, nine nineteen. It's, it gets, this is real complex, but all of the, all of the documentation that was sent with this should explain it all. Um, so we are, their total revenues are increasing to one million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred thousand. And then, uh, their new total for their total expenditures is gonna be one million, two hundred and six, three, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So in these sheets that I send along when these things go out, this, this shows here, we budgeted a beginning fund balance of five hundred thousand for the nine-one-ones. And then their actual came in at eight hundred and twenty-nine. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna increase this budget line by three hundred thousand dollars. That will bump up their revenues that were one point two four three. And then, then they'll now be the one point five four three. And then on the page before that, it has their total expenditures for the fund of nine hundred and sixteen, four seventy-seven, and then we're increasing their expenditures by three hundred thousand that amount on the beginning fund balance into this transfer line. So their total expenditures will be the one point two-one-six-four-seven-seven, so they shouldn't be in a negative.
So there. And that money in the new fund is, is to be spent on nine-one-one. You're talking about the nine-one-one, three hundred thousand dollars that will?
That money's gonna be transferred out and go to the the jail, the jail capital fund or whatever, yeah.
So we have in this one, Rob. When we budgeted our physical budget, we estimated five hundred thousand dollars as a beginning fund balance. They actually had seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in it for their beginning fund.
They actually had eight hundred and twelve.
Or, okay. Yes, sorry, this is, uh, so they actually had eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which is three hundred thousand, twenty-one, three hundred twenty-one thousand dollars more than what we budgeted. But in the end, their ending fund balance was, was six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. There's, the, the money's there. There's no deficit.
So like, I'm gonna go back to this sheet. This is the revenue and expense from early in November, but before we made all the changes, they're, they're projected in the fund balance was around three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So.
Okay, two things. First of all, I don't understand why, why we bound, why we budgeted them at a beginning fund balance of five hundred thousand dollars if we knew they had eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
So we don't know. When we budget, it's our best guess and we're trying to figure out what their beginning fund balance is gonna be in like February, March, when we don't really have that figure until the end of June, actually the first of July. So the budget is our best estimate of what we think will be in the fund.
But don't we go July to July?
But we've already adopted the budget by July one.
Adopted in June. So when, when we're budgeting for the next fiscal year, we're trying to guess what kind of a cash balance they're gonna have left over. And I'll be honest, I guess on the conservative side. Because I don't wanna put a figure out there and if they don't have that much, then we're in the pickle we are with the Fair Event Center.
Okay, that makes sense to me, but and you did answer my question, but they are, their revenues minus expenditures is at a deficit and it's a drawing down that their ending fund balance, correct?
Correct.
Because last year is like six hundred thousand. And so is that a, a trend that we'll continue to see, something we should be worried about? Like with the Taylor grazing farms, that was built up and now it's been expended?
I honestly don't know, cuz I'm not tracking nine-one-one that closely.
So it's, at budget time last year, their total expenditures were nine hundred and sixteen thousand for, for seventy-seven. Total rev, total resources, which total resources takes into effect the beginning fund balance and what we're projecting to get in resources was one million, two forty-three. So even if you add another three hundred thousand to the nine sixteen, we're still under the total resources.
Okay. Thank you, that, thanks for.
Yeah. It's, it's a lot. This, this was a lot. So. How are you?
So in short, like I tried to summarize, um, Fund two-thirty-one, which we renamed. It has a budgeted, or it had, um, revenues in it of three million dollars. We're gonna move the three hundred thousand. So that would be uh, three million, three hundred thousand, and then we're also gonna move the five million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine seventy-eight. So that would be eight million, five hundred and eighty-six, five hundred and uh, after the, after the, and after the, the administrative costs. Yeah, five right there, five million, eight hundred, or five million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight. Will be the total balance in that fund after we make these moves. And then subtract from that the twenty-four thousand, five hundred and, and administrative transfer. And that's how much we'll have left for construction.
It was challenging to look at it, but I feel comfortable now with the further explanations. And it'll be nice to have these things in the right funds for what we need them to be expended.
It was a, it was a, at the time of the budget, um, getting this all lined out was missed. But the funds are there. We're not spending anything more than what we have. It's, it, it's there. We're just reading, we're just moving it from certain funds to consolidate it all into a a capital improvement fund. So as part of the budget, supplemental budget hearing, I would open the floor to public comment. Any public comment room? Um, online, any public comment online? Not seeing or hearing any online? Then, um, the next step would be, um, a motion and vote to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven. But I wanna make sure that, are you Commissioner Frank? Okay with what we're doing?
Yes. Thanks for asking.
I, I move to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven in the matter of adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations as reviewed and discussed.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven in the matter of adopting supplemental budget and making appropriations as discussed. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
An opposed? During none, motion carries. With that done, we'll close the supplemental budget hearing and reopen Harney County regular session. With remaining business scheduled for after lunch, we'll take a, a lunch recess, uh, business for after lunch is, um, kind of a status update from the Fair Board, Fair Manager, and we have to do some, uh, budget resolution, transfer of funds for the event center project.
We didn't get to hear your gentle deliberation yet. Do we wanna not, wanna put on their lunch date or?
I don't have a whole lot, uh, uh, right about the time we took off for the A O C conference, I got the final draft contract for the jail project. I forwarded on to county council, they reviewed it, okay. Forwarded it on to, uh, C I S. C I S is looking at it for, uh, insurance requirements during construction of the contractor. Uh, and the contractor themselves are in review of it right now. I'm hoping to have it back pretty quick so we can finalize that and get signatures on it. Just other weekly administrative business. Um, continuing to follow up on all these things like the, the surplus proceeds. I mean, I'm always got, always got a lot of that stuff going on. Most of the stuff I think I end up talking about during our county court session, so I don't have anything else to do with.
Are you familiar with Oregon buys for procurement stuff?
Yes.
I'm, okay, I figured you were.
I am, but I don't like it. It's very complicated and, uh, their website that they go through for the procurement and the, the work orders and all that. Um, and actually I was gonna go, they were there at the conference and I was gonna go talk to them and I forgot about it. Missed that opportunity because I was gonna express to them my, I, I don't like it. I don't like their website. It's very cumbersome and hard to navigate. Um, and they don't give you any kind of a manual with it to figure out how to find stuff. But as, as, as contracts go through their system, um, I think other people have gotten, they don't like it either, so they end up doing it hard copy. But technically, you're supposed to go into the system, pull up the contract, electronically sign it, and then it goes out for distribution and everything and you go back in and print a copy for your records. But I think other people are not liking it either cuz I usually get hard copies to sign and then I get a hard copy back for our records. So I wanna be popular, most of the, um, too many. I don't, again, I don't like it. I don't like their system. But we have to be, we have to be enrolled in it as a, as a vendor if we're selling services of any kind and or as a, as a, um, contractor or whatever the, if we're getting funds from like O H A for our home health and hospice, that's where most of the our Oregon buy stuff goes through is for our health department. So I don't really have anything else. If I think of anything over the lunch break, I'll hit it at the end. So if they're, uh, right now, and for the time being, we shall recess for lunch back at one o'clock. And somebody remind me to start this when we.
Fifteen minutes into it, have that old darn moment.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is one P M. Harney County Court will come back to order, reconvene. I'd find that verbiage in that, in the book somewhere. Uh, anyway, so the next topic we have on the agenda is the matter of transfer, intra-fund transfer of Fund two-fifty-two, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty. So, um, after the last invoice came in from the builders, it was about seventy-five thousand dollars over what the balances were. So Treasure Heaney and myself looked at a couple of different locations to try and make up that, that amount. There's forty thousand in the reserve still, in the, in the, uh, Fairgrounds Reserve Fund and, um, fifty thousand in the contingency line, but we'll use thirty-five thousand, five hundred to cover the dollars and cents. Um, and that's this transfer, the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty in the matter of fund transfer of appropriations for Fair Fund two-fifty-two. Um, and that's, that, uh, contingency line would be, um, a decrease of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and, um, move to capital outlay. Same increase of thirty-five thousand, five hundred with a balance of twenty, overall balance to what the original budget amount was would be twenty thousand, five hundred. So that takes care of that part of it, and I think, uh, if I recall right from Treasure Heaney, the Fairgrounds Reserve Fund, we can expend those funds directly out of that fund and don't have to move them around. Um, but we do need, we do need, um, because of that's the Betty Morgan money, it has, those expenditures have to be approved by county court. So we have two issues that we have to deal with, this resolution and then the approval of spending the forty thousand dollars out of the reserve fund.
And the reserve fund, And the reserve fund. We receive funds every year.
Yeah.
An approximate amount of. Just generally.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember because it's, it's based off of a sale and it's annual. Proceeds from a property sale. So based on the, yeah, the estimated revenues for that fund is seventy-two five, seventy-two fifty. This year, so I'm gonna venture to say that's probably about the average annual amount that's gonna be coming into it.
Um, I'm, you know, in support of doing this, but I was wondering what happened basically.
Um, cool, thanks, so, um, well, and I didn't bring the papers with me, so. We spent like a couple of these down quite a lot. And they, those transactions happened at the end of June. And then incorrect balances got transferred over to the July. To the July budget, I was out of that budget for several months and then um, was uh. Doing all the fair stuff and I relied on the budget that I get every month to be correct, it's been a little.
Do you keep your own?
That's what I didn't do, because I had been up until that point and then up there and all of the flood and everything else like that. What's going on, I didn't, because I didn't have enough time and I relied on that because I thought it would be correct, had been the entire time, so.
So. What happened was there was expenditures in June, right about the same time that we adopted the budget. And again, um. Whether you wanna say they're estimated or whatever, but, but there is a point in between. The time that we're preparing and adopting the budget and then you have your first of July budget. Where there can be expenditures that don't get captured in what the balances are.
Well, it's open clear through July, correct, and it should be. Able to be made correct by the time you get on August or September.
So, no, we correct by August? Why? So, so those balances, it, it's based on the balances that we adopted during the adopted budget in June.
No, I'm talking about expenditures more or less.
Well, it's the same though, because, because the expenditures that happened in June. Affected the balances that were carried, that were s- the starting balances for July one.
Okay.
So, so there's that timeline in between the time that it's budgeted and that it's adopted, I mean, not budgeted, that it's expended. And it's adopted. And July one.
Right, because they're still like September.
Excuse me?
It's some hard close in July.
No, but those numbers stay the same budgeted amount.
But they can be amended when those budgets are in, like, I would fully expect it reflected per count.
I mean, it's really important to keep your own spreadsheet.
I am aware.
I mean, just, in a big, just, just in case.
This uh, this closes out the phase one. Which kind of got morphed into phase one and phase two though, or are there other expenditures? Still to be expected from Five Star?
So um, after we have our invoice of the nine hundred and thirteen thousand that we had covered, there is, and I have, I write up thirty-one. So they were in the middle of and have already ordered mandors. Plumbing, some architecture, the louvers. And um, so it's a total of hundred and forty. And then some unbilled retention, so a total of two hundred and four thousand that won't be drilled. Um, again. And then that is the hard line, there's nothing ordered, there's nothing beyond that, so. Oh, I've taken a look at our budget as far as the um. Take the for budgets and we can come up with. Uh, definitely not all, but we can come up with a good chunk that can come out of our water and sewer, it can come out of some other things that were. Over budgeted and will extend completely from there.
How much is the delta? The difference? Between what you're thinking you can. Pay more and you won't.
Just depends, I, I still have a fair bill that's outstanding.
Oh, what?
A fair bill. And it's a fair, it's a fair.
Help, sir?
Where do we pay our taxes at?
It's the treasurer's office, right on? Yeah, treasurer's, or. Assessor tax collector.
So until I get that bill, I don't know exactly how much I can still, I mean. Use out of that fund, so, and I reminded the account two or three times. So I respect one's in hopefully.
So does that mean anything is gonna have to not get done because there isn't enough money all said and done? To pay everything you're expecting to come in?
Well, depends like on what then.
I mean, we're not gonna have any more to give you, so.
No, I, I, so, we have done that in addition, I think Craig is. Uh, for, I mean, has requested some funds from some donors that I've expressed interest, I have Kristen and uh. Tom have as well. And so, but they were waiting on for. We, you know, for consideration of donation was specific items, so like the specific items that won't completed. Be over red doors, so the big quarters, the. Electrical inside. And those are the two major must haves, there were three other items, gas heating in the arena, humidity control and big fans, but those are. Non-essential, so those other, those are the two line items that they specifically took dollar amounts out for, so. Although it's not. Ideal, I think it will be. I think it'll be fruitful having the solid numbers.
At some point, I don't know if it's more appropriate to discuss it now or after we take action on that resolution, but can you just kind of give? Like a dummy version, a rundown of what is there now in terms of the facility, the electrical, the plum? What is there now and maybe like what will be there when they've completed that work too, but just so we can envision what?
That the shell is built. Without additional funding, we don't have power or lights inside of the arena or roll outdoors. The other three items are ventilation and heat, which could be considered optional. To make the building fully functional along with private donor money to finish the power in the roll up door. Am I correct? That's the dummy version. That's what it would take to complete basically phase one. But we also have to remember that we are over budget, but we probably spent. Close to four hundred thousand extra dollars on the aging infrastructure to bring it up to code, even be able to build it. So, we did, although, although what we lost in the building, we certainly gained in the infrastructure. Of the fairgrounds, a lot of that was the power, water and sewer.
And is it correct that a lot of that wasn't just specifically for the new building, but also will allow for expansion in the future?
Correct. Correct. And some of those are hidden costs because until they dig up a water line and when it breaks twenty-four feet down the line.
Three different times.
Three different times, I mean, they're all things that could not be forecasted. But, but there was a lot of extra money that went into the infrastructure, tub water should have been piled. That would be on the scope.
Um, I think the, the original grant for infrastructure was one point three or something like that.
Oh, we have one for one million and one for, for um, two million.
For infrastructure?
And not specifically infrastructure, but including infrastructure.
Yeah, but I think the initial one, the very first one was infrastructure, existing infrastructure. And it came in above the million dollars. Basically.
By the time you get all the planning and all of the. Writing and anything else, I don't know yet.
Um, the next question I had, and I wouldn't be able to answer this, and you may not be able to answer it either, but it might be a fact of having to have. The attorneys that did the contract, the design bill contract. To look at it and say, did the contractor perform the work that they, that was under the design bill that they said we can do this much work for this much money? Do you know if that, if that's, I mean, true to case or whatever?
From what I understand, it is true to case, we just spent more money on the infrastructure than, than what was. I mean, we can ask them to, to pay more for infrastructure that was our aging infrastructure, so. Um, and a lot of that's information from the conversations I had with Tom, who's been really the, the trained contractor. To, to communicate and, you know, look at the bill and make sure things are done right, and. That's where a lot of that extra money went, between that and the extra money that we spent on the pro mini. Um, that would be the two biggest, biggest indicators of people budget.
And we did, we had some conversation around that if I recall, and not with Five Star, not with the contractor, but amongst. The construction committee about. Did they complete what was within and? From a legal standpoint, were, were these unexpected costs and the general consensus was these were unexpected costs that could not have been.
Cannot have been foreseen, yeah, yeah, and that, that, that is true, that was with the construction committee, not, not with the contract.
It, it's just the question that has to be asked, you know, that if they're within the scope of what they said they were gonna do.
Yep, no, a hundred percent, that was, that was actually my first, was my first question. Was, is this, is our money being spent appropriately to the contractor, and that was before we got to this point, you know, this was. This was around fair time when we were trying to. Close in on where we're at, you know, I, I, my assumption was that we were on budget. Um, and we were gonna have some items at the end to be able to collaborate. And see whether or not, you know, say the heat and a few of those items, whether those are gonna be luxury items or we're gonna have money to do them. So I didn't learn the shortcoming until just last week, you know, and so. Everything that I had read and understand and the correspondence that I got and read, I thought we were on track. And we knew we were gonna have to scale back, remainder of the money, we're gonna have to scale back some of the amenities we have. But I didn't learn about the shortcomings until. Till just two weeks ago, you know?
So when the end of September, financial, you know, monthly reports, whatever, come out from the treasurer. Would, would you all have been able to have accurate numbers by then?
We did not, why not?
I, I think the dummy version is, is when the, when the fiscal year closed in June. And opened in July. There was money that wasn't carried over from, from the close to the open. And so the budget got opened with the wrong number in it. And we've been operating with that budget in the wrong number until just recently.
You were operating with a higher number?
Yes. And then we just realized, this is how I understand it, but we just realized. That there was some money that was allocated in fiscal year twenty twenty-four that wasn't took out of the starting budget number for twenty twenty-five. And so you actually have less money than you thought you did, so we've been operating all this time thinking we had more money than what we actually did. So, that, I think that's how we got to where we're at right now.
Because I heard what you said, Judge, but it just seems like. By, by that first quarter, anything that wasn't. Re- regardless of that, should be caught up. The monthly cash, cash report, cash pool report would show an accurate balance.
Was that? When I said you're busy.
If, say we started off with. This round numbers, a hundred thousand dollars that's on the budget, on, on a line for the budget. But in June, the last two weeks of June, ten thousand dollars are spent, so the actual budget is ninety thousand balance, right? So as time goes on and the cash, the monthly cash report is put out. That number is gonna be correct, because it'll catch up with itself at the end of the next month.
And those are.
Now that a hundred thousand dollar amount is not gonna change, but the actual balance is reflected in the monthly report.
How uh? With the things that you outlined, that you'll be going for private donors to complete. And there was some talk about the potential of being able to start to host some events, especially with the new panel structure that was coming in. Maybe as early as like this spring or late winter. How do you think the electricity and the overhead doors and the other things you described will affect those plans moving forward or just something to work around?
Having no doors and no lights kind of a no-go, I'm, you know, so until we get that, we're kind of a pause. In hindsight, fifty fifty, I probably would have been quite so gung ho to buy the panel packages, but we realized that. Our budgeting had us in a situation which we were at a shortfall. We would have had neither, but we would have had, we would, we would have had more money to go toward the power, but. But you need both to be able to do, the people that are interested in using the building, you need both, you know, so. Kind of a double edged sword, but I would have been less gung ho to. To secure the deal on the panels had I known that. We were in a, you know, shortfall, to finish the power and the doors, so.
So worst case scenario. Without any other donations coming in, the facility would still be usable as intended. During daytime, in the summer season, in the warm season.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And any grants? Or going on? Said I haven't been able to get.
I, I, I hope to reach out here on November first, meeting the board member Teman. Um, because she seems very versed in grants, and so I'm gonna try to task her at that time. Um, to, uh, you know, put her focus, she seems to be, had a real lot of grants. I'm hoping that we can ask her whether she's able to solely focus on her purpose of being on the board. Um, to try to find the grants, so. And I've reached out to three people, um, were private donors. And started those conversations, like Lynn said, having this list of items that we need helps out. Because instead of just asking for money, now we can say we're asking for help in these areas to, to complete the building. And so it's a kind of a double edged sword because we're gonna need to ask for that money ahead of time, which. You're not asking for any one specific thing, you're just simply saying, can you give money to, to us? And so now we're saying, we specifically need three hundred thousand dollars to finish the power and we'd like to know if you'd like to invest with us, so. So it does help some from that standpoint, it's a poor standpoint in time.
I don't know if they could help, but uh, High Desert Partnership. You know, they know a lot about. Where money is and.
Yeah.
Who they've used for grant writings.
Yeah, yeah, we, we do have it completed, we have all the information from the one grant that we applied for, it's helpful information to have. Um, we could find a channel to put that towards, you know.
What, what happened with that, I?
We didn't qualify.
Because?
Um, because of the type of organization that we were.
Why?
Yeah. Yeah, so it wasn't that we weren't asking for the right things, it's the overall picture of who we were, is what we gave us when qualified, so. There's a lot of grants out there and a person can spend a lot of grants, now, and hopefully, hopefully, board member Teman can. You know, even if you go after the twenty-five thousand dollar at a time grants, those, those add up. You know, and so that's where a lot of the grant writing is, is the time to apply for the, you know, there's. All kinds of ones, but a lot of them are small, so that's what we, our focus is just. Not trying to bite off a big one, but we need to try to capture the small ones if we can.
How lengthy is that grant application that you already have compiled a bunch of information into?
It, he was working on it for very far in ninety days.
Like, is it in a document, how many pages is it?
Well, I can go into, it's, it's put into the program world, and so then I can go into the text boxes and copy these. Information, I need to go over talking, but I do, I have the word document that you worked from.
I only ask because if you did have a document, I've reached out to our partners with O-Tech several times because they have someone that just does grant writing. And said, if there's any grants that you can find in county, do it, but if. If I had that specific document and I could say, here's a document with some information. Can you find anything, so if you have that in a shareable.
Can you cut and paste it and put it in our document?
Yeah, that'd be good, then you got it, you know. Their grant writing services, they told me was limited to um. Of power.
Well, we need electricity and power.
And then any kind of uh, energy efficiency type of a grant. They would be, that's, it's gonna be still within their lane of, of power and.
If, if somehow or another we could look at LED lighting or something, I mean. The, the true part of. Is you're right, as a lot of those have to do with taking out indus and going to LED or, you know, a lot of those grants have to do with improving the existing. Structure as far as from a electrical standpoint, so.
Yeah, I think, I think they would be. It would be worth pursuing something with them, especially since we had reached out to them during this process. Because a lot of the extra costs incurred had to do with power delivery because of some O-Tech infrastructure and there was. Some debate as to who should be liable for that, and that was brought up to them, so they already know it's on our radar and that might make.
Some, I mean, some of the, some of the electrical upgrades we had to do were because of the. Of the, of the, the existing equipments would not, would not meet the new standards, you know, so. You you can't take the whole new room together, so.
Um, a little off topic, but financially, is, what's the status of the RV park gap? Is it? No water, no?
Oh, no.
It's fine? Is it used much?
Quite a bit, yeah.
So is that generating pretty good?
Or do we kind of go along here it goes out from it? Yeah. Because we pay per stand water and sewer.
The the city, basically, the city of water and sewer fees supersede the amount of money that we make off of it, so. If it was full every day, it would probably be okay, but for Monday to Tuesdays, makes it pretty hard. And I would, I would like to see some negotiation within the city on those, on those terms, because. It's, I mean, they're the ones getting rich on that, certainly not us, um, but.
They, they changed that up on us about a year ago.
Yeah.
Because originally it was one, one connection fee. And then when we started talking about uh, suspending the account through the winter months, because for winterization and turning off the water. Then they ended up coming back with per stand fee.
Yeah, that might be something we should put on our agenda in the future, because I had a conversation with one of their council members who was unaware, that's the way they were charging us. And when you described it months ago, it's, I would describe it as unreasonable. You can pay for each point of access.
We actually even get, get charged the county for any of our residential lots here in town, like this one across the street, there's nothing on it. There's service that goes up to the property line, so there's an access fee that we get, and there's one down in South Eagan and whatnot that we have to pay. Which doesn't make sense, there's nothing on them, there's no ser- no, nobody, no structure on them.
Yeah. Yeah. There's not a lot of actual service.
It's there and available is all it is.
Yeah.
Any concerns about the security with that nice facility there or a weird stuff?
Not yet. Lucky Lucy's stomach.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's one thing that the, the rule of doors would help provide is some security. But, but right now, aside from vandalism, there's really nothing we can damage, you know, um, you know, besides the can of spray paint. Some kids saying, let's Lucy, um, you know, there's not a lot that we've done there, but. At this point, thankfully, we still are the community which represents new things being left new for now, so.
Hope so.
I think that covers most of any of the questions I had, um.
And and to finish your question, there is. A s- a secondary phase with more wish items. That contain things like asphalt demo, concrete sidewalks, ADH parking, structural curb, asphalt paving. Um, parking lot striping, relocated benches, landscaping, you know, there's a lot of things that, that take place outside. That, that would complete the whole project, what's told here is about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. But one can see those as additional things, and we're gonna have to look at, you know, um. As it is now, it's basically gravel around the building, it's certainly safe. Um, but it doesn't have a lot of those extra amenities at this point in time, so. Um, those are being a lot further down on the wish list, I think the, the two main ones would be forty three thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars for overhead doors. Then there's the electrical lighting and power, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And then, you know, we look at the, you know, humidity control movers and the big fans, you know, those total about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then if we wanted heat, that would be forty eight thousand, you know, so. That's.
So your wishlist there is about six, seven hundred thousand dollars?
If you were to do all this, about six fifty?
Yeah, it's kind of phased out, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and and some of this. And to be honest with you, I would not be a proponent of some of the things on the secondary wishlist, because there'd be no reason to put it in asphalt. When our plans are having a phase two, we can build over top of it, you know, so, um. Some of these, some of these items are kind of no goes. Um, but like I said, the, the first line item would be.
The overhead doors are pretty solid and run numbers, the, uh, you know, electrical and power, they're looking on some. Uh, some economical options. And so to bring that three hundred thousand down too, so. I mean, the amount that is gonna bring me down, I'm waiting for.
Yeah, and I think when, when I ask a specific question, like what do you mean by electrical, like, let's, we were talking nuts and bolts in the language terms, that's. That's lights in the ceiling, it's electrical outlets around the outside, it's security lighting around the outside. I mean, that's really what we're looking at, you know, it's, it's, that's what the power is, and hours to the building, so simply would be wiring. Bring the fixtures in, like you said, lights, security lighting around the outside, different things, so.
You all have an opening on your airboard that this time I'm not gonna ask about that.
Yes, so Kate White filled into a position uh, to finish out a term, until that term would end, and so. Uh, she will reapply, and but we have to, so anyone can reply over through the process.
I was just gonna ask what seat it was, like, because I didn't know who, if somebody vacated or if they were turning out or.
It was Kate White and she.
She filled in for.
Filled in for Leanne, basically taking care of the stack.
Now, that should close tomorrow, and I have Kate's out there for a letter of interest, and I haven't received anything else, so. If I get nothing else by end of day tomorrow, these will come too fast.
Our, our plans would be to review as a board, and then make our recommendation to you guys, and then you will ultimately decide.
Have we put ours out yet for county positions?
I think last year you kind of do that. Again, we're all in January, we kind of brought everyone together.
December, second December meeting in the month would be the seventeenth. Or we do a, a January seventh. And try to get everything appointed in that first meeting. For everybody.
Yeah.
Lindsay, do you feel comfortable with the uh? Verification on? Wh- what's the report, monthly report to keep track on on, that has the actual fund balances? Would you call it cash?
Oh, the cash pools.
Cash pool.
Yeah, no, and I am aware, I guess, just when June, May, June, July hit, it is. Full steam everything, I mean, you look at my expense reports, they're this long, because.
I know, I I I know, I trust you to track it, that's all, I just.
I know, and that's two months, and two months is that spread out, you know what I mean, and it was just, it took months a lot, but. It was enough, so.
Okay.
And just, I just relied on not doing your cash fund, not like a budget once, because it should.
No, I just, I just, I'm not trying to be annoying here, I just.
No.
I hope everybody's understanding.
I'm worried, you know, that that's there, and I was worried, just the light where I shouldn't have. Fix the best we can, I'm sure it'll be sooner or later, so.
Any other questions, discussion? So I need, I would entertain a motion to authorize the expenditure from the uh, Fair Ground Reserve Betty Morgan Fund, forty thousand dollars.
So moved?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to authorize the expenditure of forty thousand dollars from the Fair Fund, Fair Reserve Fund. Which was what, three twenty six, is that what they said? Yes, Fair Grounds Reserve, three, fund three twenty six, uh, forty thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And secondly, then a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty in the matter of an intra-fund transfer of appropriations for. Uh, for Fair Fund two fifty two. And that um, is in the amount of thirty five thousand five hundred dollars. From contingency line to the capital outlay line. So that'd be an increase of thirty five thousand five hundred in the capital outlay line for a total balance. From the original balance to, um, with this monies of two hundred thousand five, two hundred thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and that doesn't mean that's what's in there, it just adds to what the budgeted balance was, so, um. Any further discussion? Or did I get a motion on that?
I moved to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty in the matter of the interfund, intra-fund transfer appropriations for Fair Fund two fifty two as, as just discussed.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty in the matter of intra-fund transfer appropriations for Fair Fund two fifty two. A decrease of thirty five thousand five hundred dollars in a contingency line, bringing that line balance to fourteen thousand five hundred. And an increase of thirty five thousand five hundred to the capital outlay line, and bringing that budgeted balance to two hundred thousand five hundred dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you for your time, thanks for, you know. Obviously, with the invoice out there, it was something we needed to act on as soon as we could, so we could pay the bills, um.
Sure.
But appreciate your time, being able to come in an afternoon. And. My first email last week was, was like ten thirty, ten thirty win. Looking at it, I'm like, yeah, I was in a hurry to get it before. So anyway, thank you.
Because it was the twenty fourth, and I was like, that's on a Monday, can't go away, Thanksgiving's on a Thursday, we're switching it up, so.
Yeah, but we should have had it last Wednesday, but because of the AOC conference, we moved it to today.
Gotcha.
Is it gonna throw a kink into your guys' operations if we do try to do a first meeting in January? Blanket approval appointments to missions, and you guys are planning on having a meeting on Monday the fifth?
As long as we can pre-plan, we need to move that meeting, accommodate your guys' schedule, but I. I would assume if it closes at our December meeting, we would be able to make a, make our board's recommendation, so.
Yeah, I'd go, I don't know, I don't think we'd be able to make our recommendation, but you're talking about January, right?
So our first, our normal date would be January seventh?
Right. So so wouldn't, but it probably wouldn't be the end of the world if we needed to approve one if we had a recommendation.
No.
In the December meeting.
Just trying to package it all together. Um, I mean, if you guys have a quorum still, one person wouldn't, wouldn't affect anything.
No, I think they moved to nominate new officers to February because that.
Until we get, uh, until we get to nominate new officers, move that to February, so that we can have our board member approval in January before we nominate our officers.
And I know that our MOU is still hanging out there, every time I sit down to try to work on it, I get a little bit done, and then it. I get pulled away to something else. Commissioner Frank and I mentioned it, I think during AOC last week, that we need to get on that, um, but it's still on my to-do list.
We brought it up to Commissioner Frank at our, at our last board meeting, so. We just wanted to make sure that we hadn't totally forgot about it, and maybe we'll be on track to have a nice one for twenty twenty six.
Yeah. Uh, one thing while we're, while we're here and kind of talking about it, one thing, and we can talk about this later if we want to or whatever, but um. Here recently, we had a need for some brief, just minor maintenance assistance, and we called upon your Dustin.
Yeah.
Called upon Dustin to come up while Chad was gone for. Whatever he was going for, um, and Dustin came up and helped decide it was a light fixture thing, whatever. But I kind of got to thinking about, neither one of them have any backup. So I was kind of wondering about maybe having an, in this MOU agreement, that we could do some maintenance backup between those two positions. You know, Chad's off, then Dustin could come up and help out with, not major projects, but little things that come up or whatever. And same for down there, if he needs an extra hand down there or something, whatever, so it's an idea I thought about putting into the MOU.
That'd be a great thing, especially like if someone's gone on vacation, you have a real emergency, you need something fixed that allows for some continuity.
Yeah.
So yeah, I call chat anyways.
Just, and you know, we can do that just as a handshake thing, but to formalize it is good too.
Yeah, 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 for sure, for sure.
It's all I had.
Any other deliberation?
I don't have anything.
The one thing I wanted to close the loop on is I did go talk to the tax assessor at lunch, and that amount of money. Which was thirty three thousand dollars for this quarter, but it's like hundred and ten thousand. It is correct that private landowners pay the Department of Forestry stuff, but we are charged with collecting that. And if there are late fees or if we have to return money, we can't recruit any of those costs. But that, that amount of money is for Department of Forestry lands that are within our county, but we're required by the state to collect those and send them straight to the state.
Collect them from the landowners and then distribute dispersing?
Give them to the.
So those are. Landowners who are adjacent to?
Landowners who have forested land that's covered, that is. Has a compulsory coverage by the Department of Forestry. They have to pay those fees, but we're required to collect those, so.
And so that, what's on their tax bill, they pay their taxes, I guess, I, they cool it.
This morning I went over and, and made a copy of a letter that had some ORSs on it, and I was gonna do some more research on it myself, but.
Okay, interesting.
I know one of the things we talked about, just our budget increments, um, that we had moved and talked about a little bit was. Um, as we go through that budget or money, I know that that, that firm gained a lot of interest. And, and I can't have a lot of clarity in finding where exactly that interest is within that budget, uh, something that. I would like to see the bottom of, on our construction budget, because there was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest that that money made. While we were waiting to start expending it. And I can't really find and just looking at the, you know, the normal.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just hard to see where that interest is actually accrued at, so.
So I know. I know, um, that when that money, before we created the Vet Center Fund during the last budget cycle. That money was sitting in the Fair Grounds Fund, and we transferred all of that out. So that interest ended up staying in the Fair Fund, so your beginning fund balance this year in your Fair Grounds Fund is gonna be a little bit higher because of that interest. Um, I can look at it and see exactly about what it, what it was or what it is to date anyway. Um, and then after it was moved to the Events Center Fund. Again, I should be able to. I can, I can figure it out, but uh, let me, let me do some research on it, I figure, I can tell you what it is to date, I can't tell you. I c- I can't break it down month to month or whatever, but I can tell you what it's earned to date.
Yeah.
I know that it's from like fourteen thousand four hundred, like the year to date in the Events Center Fund, but there was that. Pretty significant chunk of change that I think would be best used to go to cover overages, you know, rather than setting our Fair Fund. To go back to the project that it was intended for and the funds that really generated that interest.
That was kind of my point, is that those, that interest was generated from the money intended for the fund, for the Events Center, so. Term, that money should be spent on the Events Center, so.
I'll, I'll get with the treasurer and. See if we can figure out what portion of the interest that's in that fund right now is from those grants. And what amount of it was from county fund dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll, I'll take a little bit, I think, research, but we'll, we'll try and get a ballpark number, and then if, and then if it's in, well, it's gonna be in. The Fair, Fair Grounds Fund, Fair Grounds Operations Fund, probably, um. We can probably do the same thing like we just did. On the contingency line and move it to the capital outlay line for use.
Yeah.
And because I think that will cover it down significantly, and there's as much sitting in those, I think, there is.
Yeah, the other, um, that's where I, I talked a little bit about, we put dirt in the. For the building, here right after Thanksgiving, so that's some of the ultimate, I have to go and pull, that's twenty five thousand dollars. The dirt was all done, we later paid to have it trucked in, and so that was gonna be around no more than twenty five thousand, so.
Or Betty Morgan Fund, um, it was two hundred and twenty four thousand is the cash balance on it. I think the budgeted balance for this year was two hundred and six thousand, so there's still a lot for twenty thousand in there as well.
A little bit, I mean, we can, we can budget it, we can appropriate it down to zero, but then it's zero.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah.
Yeah.
There's no harm in that.
Our roadmaster said you might be able to, I, I use some resource. Our roadmaster said you might be able to, uh, I use some resources, and so I just wanted to make sure you guys.
I actually talked to him about, and um, and he was coordinating to be able to, to help out with that.
The budgeted interest for the fund two fifty two, the, the fair, fairgrounds, the fair and fair operations fund. Um, budgeted was. Twenty thousand dollars. As of. Well, that, cause that goes into. Yeah, I'll have to do some other research. Actual for this year received is, which is about right on track, is nine thousand six hundred ninety eight dollars. For year to date actual, and that's as of. Eleven seven.
This fiscal year, for the fair fund or for the?
Fair fund. But, but I'm not sure, I think that's gonna be. So the ending for, beginning fund balance. Cause that'll get wrapped up into the beginning fund balance or ending fund balance. It, it doesn't keep accumulating in that line, it goes to the bottom line, so the ending fund balance. Unappropriated ending fund balance is two hundred forty eight thousand dollars in the, in the fair operations fund. And that, that's where it's gonna be at, that's, I don't know what portion of that is that makes up that amount, but that's the total ending fund balance. It might be. Hundred thousand? Something like that, that's, yeah, I, I don't know, I'm just guessing. I don't have anything else? Anything? Again, thank you for your time, thank you for your availability.
Yeah, thank you, no problem.
With no further business, Arnie County Court will stand adjourned.